Okay, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July 15th. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll call, please.
Supervisor Groom.
Present.
Supervisor Horsley.
Here.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor Tessier.
Here.
President Pine.
Here. We'll begin the meeting, as always, with a public comment. So this is an opportunity for individuals to speak to items that are not on the agenda, that are listed on the consent agenda, or on the county's manager's report, or the board members' report. Each speaker will have two minutes, and since these are not agendized, we can't get into a discussion about them. So we'll start today with Dr. Mary Lorenz.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, supervisors and public. I'm Dr. Mary Lorenz. I'm Chair of the San Mateo County Commission on Aging. And I'm really happy to be here today, just to let you know that a few months ago, I had discussed at our annual presentation about the Commission on Aging, that we were going to have a couple presentations about elder abuse, and this involved a play which involved a mother who was being financially abused by her son. Well, the play went on twice, and once in Half Moon Bay, and once in Daly City. In Daly City, it was attended by over 50 individuals, as well as David Canapa, the mayor of Daly City. In Half Moon Bay, it was written up in the Half Moon Bay Review, so I'm giving each copy, each one of the supervisors a copy. It has a little green tag where the write-up is. I'm also giving you a copy of a really nice email that we received from Carol Shemoll-John, Executive Director of Senior Co-Siders. And also, there is a little yellow pamphlet that discusses what the play was about. Also, there is my business card for the San Mateo County Commission on Aging, if you'd like to contact me about anything. Of course, Adrienne Tessier is our person who guides us. But basically, the play was so well received by the public, that there was such a great interaction between the public and the actors, and the idea of financial abuse was really very, in a very powerful way portrayed. You can give a senior something to read, or a person something to read, and it can go right out the other ear, or out the other eye, or however you want to put it. But in a play format, where they actually interact and become part of the situation, it was amazing. The public comment was that people felt very positive about it. So we're looking forward to having the play again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for the update. We appreciate that. So we now have three speakers who are coming to each of our meetings. We'll start with Roger Medler.
Yes, good morning. Here we go again. So you say you can't help Teresa and I with our issues of concern. So there's a lot of people in Pacifica that are looking for your help, and we'd really appreciate you making a few phone calls or email. And people are even afraid to go to their city council meetings. I mean, this is getting ridiculous. I mean, for an example, we met with our city manager, and she made the appointment to meet with us, and then she said she would not even listen to anything we had to say, or even take it into consideration. She made her decision of what's going on. I guess she thinks she's some kind of a mediator or something. And then, I've been to the city council 16 times. They have done absolutely nothing. There's something wrong with this picture. I'm hoping that you people would investigate the city of Pacifica, look into it for us. I've been threatened. I go to the city hall because I cannot stand the violations that is going on in my neighborhood, and they threaten to arrest me. I go, "What for?" "Oh, we'll find something." So they're claiming, they claim me as a terrorist, which I don't appreciate. That does not make me a very happy camper, a terrorist, because I'm asking for help. And they're really going out of their way to get rid of me and shut me up. So I want the public to know this. So, and we also would like to know why Stephen Wagstaff cannot investigate the loan of $76,000 missing from our budget in Pacifica since 2003. Isn't that the duty of the police chief to report this? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Dyer.
Morning, supervisors. Teresa Dyer, 1408 Cresby Drive. Correct me if I'm wrong. San Mateo has 26 attorneys that were or are associated with some law firms in San Mateo County. Some run for commissions and others judges. Others are appointed. The judges come to the supervisors for their budget. So in essence, judges owe some favors to the supervisors. This gives the supervisors superpower, and why they can decide whether to use the ordinance they implemented regarding misconduct by elected officials or not. So where does the little person go for justice, who can't afford a high-priced attorney? Regarding Pacifica, we are left in the cold. For instance, in Half Moon Bay, the DA, Steve Wagstaff, has spent several hours with his chief inspector answering questions to 100 or more people regarding the young girl who was shot. "Pacifica had no such meetings," he said, "because he wasn't asked." So I asked him, "Do you think he'll show up?" "I doubt it." "Earl Chang was shot seven times. How many bullets does it take to kill a person?" Then there is my fraud case, never been investigated. And then there's the Mary Larkin case, and the elder abuse, never been investigated. Why aren't we getting the same treatment by San Mateo County as other districts? Thank you.
Okay, and then Marty Fox, is Marty here? And also, Marty, I see you also have a comment statement on the poet laureate reading. If you could combine your comments on, you know, perhaps now, that would be, that would be helpful, if you need a little extra time. But why don't you combine your comments, if you could?
Certainly, President Pine. Good morning, President Pine. Members of the board, my fellow veterans, Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Malpe, well, excuse me, Peggy Johnson, our deputy county manager, and county councilman, Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county, including your service to those residents living with serious mental illness who are insight deficient and cannot advocate for services that will restore their capacity to exercise their civil rights, because they are living on the streets, hospitalized, incarcerated, or dead, like Yanero Serrano, Errol Chang, and Edgar Aristondo. Please vote to implement Laura's Law now. One of your fellow elected officials had the courage to face the residents of Half Moon Bay, including the members of Yanero Serrano's and Errol Chang's families last Thursday evening, and extend his sympathy for their loss. He also had the courage to acknowledge that four of the last six fatal law enforcement officer-involved shootings were of persons living with serious mental illness who lacked the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily. He even had the temerity to tell the audience that the two officers involved in the Edgar Aristondo shooting in Burlingame on August 16, 2011, and were placed on administrative leave, never returned to duty. He knows that but for the land- or impetuous short acts, eight separate grants of immunity. I would have been upstairs asking him in the sheriff's department a long time ago to investigate whether the health systems, intellectually and morally bankrupt policies and procedures, have the natural and probable consequence of producing the killings of persons living with serious mental illness who are insight deficient and least able to defend themselves. The health system's use of brutality of the streets to treat persons living with serious mental illness who are insight deficient is inhumane, cowardly, and dishonorable. Voting to implement Laura's Law is reasonable, responsible, and compassionate. The sooner you do, the more courageous it will be. Our poet laureate reminds us, we are all connected with one another, and we are sometimes complicit in human suffering, whether we like it or not. The statement that rings loudly with my fellow veterans. Our poet laureate goes on to remind us that we all make choices about what to do with our resources. The San Francisco Board of Supervisors will finally decide whether to implement Laura's Law this afternoon. The Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors will decide whether to fully implement Laura's Law and expand it to reach 300 persons living with serious mental illness. San Mateo County's health systems, intellectually and morally bankrupt policies and procedures have been more than complicit in human suffering. They have promoted human suffering. Laura's Law is a way to relieve the suffering of the seriously mentally ill and their families. Please vote to implement it now. Thank you.
All right, that will conclude our public comments for today. So we'll now move to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda items. Unless there's any consent agenda item that any of my colleagues would like to remove, otherwise, we can take a motion to set the agenda and approve the consent items.
I'll move to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have two presentations today. The first is a poetry reading by our poet laureate, Carolyn Goodwin. Supervisor Slocum.
Thank you, President Pine. And good morning, everybody. It's a joy to have our poet laureate here this morning, Carolyn Goodwin. And also, I should introduce you all to Carolyn's 10-year-old daughter, who's in the audience, who came to listen to the poem that Carolyn has written. Izzy, thank you for coming. I know that Carolyn has been very, very busy, and one of the recent memories that sticks out in my mind is the poetry program that she did at the Belmont Library. And there were quite a few people there, but one in particular was a 10-year-old boy who stood up and read his poem as a result of Carolyn being there, and I'm sure her inspiration. And it was really quite a moving experience to have young people actually sharing their poetry. Mark your calendar for October 30th, because we're going to return to the San Mateo Public Library for a poetry event. So that's a few months off. Carolyn Goodwin, of course, will be there. And this morning, Carolyn has written a poem, a special poem for us, has to do, it honors the East Palo Alto poet laureate, Kalamu Chashay. And I guess this is just hot off the press. So Carolyn, if you'd go to the podium, we'd enjoy your reading.
Good morning, and thank you. Thank you very much for making room for poetry and for all the arts. I just want to say, if you missed the running of the poets at the San Mateo County Fair, I hope you can come next year, because you see a bunch of poets running around the literary stage before they get up and read together. And I carried a red cloth. It was really fun, and we had crazy music. We had a really good time. But one of the great and wonderful things about serving my community as poet laureate is the opportunity to meet and work with positive and creative people. East Palo Alto poet laureate Kalamu Chashay has been a friend and a real advocate for the arts for many years. Poetry does connect people, and I'm grateful to be connecting with the working poets of San Mateo County. As Chashay says, "Art moves." Thank you for your attention this morning, and for continuing to make space for all the arts, including poetry. And there's a little paragraph, or a few paragraphs, that I wrote about this reading, and where I got the idea for this particular poem. Dylan Thomas was born 100 years ago in Swansea, so I've been thinking about Dylan Thomas's work a lot this year. And this is a poem entitled "With What You Have" for Kalamu Chashay. "How of my clay is made blowing vines, and coal mines, and salt flats, and history? At night, the forest of strangers grew up around us, filled with birches and horsetail, the red-tailed hawk, the burrowing owl. How of my sun is made cedar and fox fur, a field of wild sedge, and two girls on the hillside collecting purple flocks, the sound harsh against their palms. Not emptiness, but a sense of the tides and far away. How of my river is made a host of shining arms, sticks and bridges, the veil of stars and blue dawn, glitter growing out of the sky. We receive it, and all day hold it out across the valley, sparkling loom. How of my feather is made a compass, and a father and a mother, a vigil, and the eagle that traveled between our hearts, paper mill and fishery and little town, a chip of beach glass, offerings, objects. There's somebody out there who's lost. There's somebody out there who's lost. But of my sun is made my river, is made my coming home." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn, for all the work that you do. I know you spend a lot of your personal time, money, and energy driving around the county and sharing the spoken word, or the written word, with everybody. And we sincerely, on behalf of all my colleagues, appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
I'd now like to take a moment to recognize Probation Services Week. So we have a resolution reclaiming July 13 through July 19 as Probation Services Week. A move approval, second of that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I believe Deputy Chief Larry Silver is here today to receive this proclamation. Let me just say a couple words about the probation department. You know, the probation department, as we all know, does very, very important work. I mean, they both reduce recidivism, and recidivism, and help people get back on their feet after having trouble with the criminal justice. And they also keep our community safe. So they're really an interesting blend of enforcement and treatment for both children and adults who have had trouble with crime. They employ 400 people, have four divisions, court services, which helps the judges think through sentencing, supervision services, realignment services, as we are all well aware, with the governor pushing so much more criminal justice responsibility at the local level, on the counties, probation has been front and center in dealing with that, and have done a terrific job here in San Mateo County. And they also run our juvenile institutions, Juvenile Hall Camp, Camp Glenwood. They supervise 7,000 probationers, and are just an incredible force for good and positive change in our county. So very pleased to present this proclamation to Deputy Chief Larry Silver.
Good morning. President Pine, Supervisor Horsley, Groom, Tessier, Slocum, Ms. Jensen, Mr. Byers. The chief is on a well-deserved vacation, so asked me to share some comments with you, and I'm honored to do so. From the chief, "First, I'd like to thank President Pine and his staff for sponsoring this recognition. Additional thanks to the Honorable Board of Supervisors and County Manager Malpe. For more than 160 years, probation has been an important part of the criminal justice system. From John Augustus, the father of probation, to the deputies, counselors, and support staff who serve here in San Mateo County, the basic mission has not changed. We strive to bring about positive change in our community and in the lives of those we serve. Very few professions allow its members the opportunity to make tangible, long-lasting changes in someone's life, whether it's the young person who finds their way back to school and graduates, or an adult who gains control over their addictions and reunifies with their family. Probation staff have the unique opportunity to see our citizens thrive and make significant progress through their struggles. Simply put, we love what we do. On behalf of the men and women of the San Mateo County Probation Department, we greatly appreciate this recognition. Thank you."
President Pine.
Supervisor Horsley.
Just make like a couple of comments. I actually started my career working for the probation department. I worked as, we used to be at Hillcrest, and have a lot of respect for probation. And actually, if I'm not mistaken, I think probation officers probably make more arrests than local police departments. Besides the fact that you actually help people get back on their, you know, on the straight and narrow, actually rehabilitate or habilitate, you also provide, you are peace officers, and you actually make a significant number of arrests. And so you keep our community safe. So I just want to express my appreciation and admiration for all the work that you do in the probation department.
Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us today, and thank you for all the work
that you do. Our next presentation concerns the Torre de Peninsula. Supervisor Groom.
Thank you, President Pine. I'm honored today to ask to present a proclamation on behalf of the Torre de Peninsula, which is Sunday, August 3. So I would make a motion to accept it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'm also honored to be the honorary chair. However, I do not ride. I want full disclosure. I stand and cheer and help others get on the way and welcome them when they come back. But this is a great, family-fun ride for the San Mateo County Park Foundation. The fees that are garnered for this race, or this ride, help pay for the Sunday closure of Cuyahoga Road for car-free biking, hiking, and walking. So this is August 3. There are three options: 63 miles with a 56-mile shortcut, 31 miles, and a 20-mile tour. All include Sawyer Camp Trail, and the two longer rides include Cuyahoga Road, which is home to Bicycle Sunday. So I would like to introduce to you the Chair of the Park Foundation for San Mateo County, Connie Sevier, and the Executive Director, Julia Bott, and present this proclamation to them.
Supervisors, thank you. Thank you, Carol. I do want to set the record straight. Since it's now July, we have changed officers for the foundation board. And although, actually, I had thought about trying to honor Connie in this meeting, because she just recently stepped down as chair and has three terms on the foundation board, she beseeched me not to. But now there's the opening to be able to acknowledge all of the service that she's given for the past nine years to help the foundation get where it is today. So thank you, Connie. And we are, again, pleased to support Bicycle Sunday through the Torre de Peninsula. This past fiscal year, we were able to donate $20,000 to the county to support Bicycle Sunday through the Torre de Peninsula and our foray into crowdfunding through Citizen Investor. One of the things that we like to say is Bike Sunday is more than about just closing a road. It's about opening a park. And it's very, very important to the community. When I spoke to Hillsborough Town Council last night about our permit to close Crystal Springs Road, one of the council members, town council members, spoke and gave a great testimony about Bicycle Sunday, and what it means to the youth of our community. So we know that it's valued across the board. We are currently on par to meet or exceed our ridership of 1,300 to 1,500 riders, including about 150 kids who go to the kids-only ride at Coyote Point. And all kids under 11 are free, because we want to make this a family-friendly event. It reduces the amount of money we raise, but it encourages families to go to the parks. And that brings up something that this has a secondary value for the Torre de Peninsula. It's not just about supporting Bicycle Sunday, but it allows us to share information to more than 6,000 people through our social media and our email lists about the San Mateo County parks, and introduce them to the parks. Right now, 1/3 of the riders are first-time riders, looking at our registrations. So we have a really great cadre of support who come back year after year. We know they bring their friends. We do make sure that they know about all the parks that they ride around on the routes, and we continue to keep them informed so that they can become involved residents and support their parks throughout the year. So thank you for your support.
And Connie, thank you for many, many years of support for the Park Foundation for the county of San Mateo. I know you have a lot of other boards you serve on, but thank you very much for your service to the parks.
I'll have to get my bike fixed.
You gotta take the training wheels off.
I too wanted to thank Julia and Connie. I have been serving on the Parks Foundation Board, and this is a major undertaking for the foundation. It informs a lot of people about our parks. It's a lot of fun. I'll definitely be there. I'm thinking about riding. I haven't quite decided. And also, I wanted to acknowledge Connie for her many years on the board, and her personal generosity to the Park Foundation, which has really been extraordinary. Okay, I realize that I missed Marty's Fox card on the prior presentation concerning the probation week. So do you have any further comments, Marty, or have we covered them?
Actually, President Pine, I wanted to thank you and all of the members of the board for welcoming Chief Keen into our community. He has reinvigorated the Community Corrections Partnership process, and reached out to the public in a way that I think has been most effective. And I really do appreciate the fact that he does feel welcome here. Coming over from Alameda County, I'm sure, was quite a change for him to go through. So that's the extent of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've completed our presentations and awards, so we'll move to matters set for a specified time. We have a couple of hearings concerning various matters. The first concerns the county's sort of sanitation districts, and is Ms. Stillman, yes, will be handling this one and presenting the matter. Then we'll have a public hearing and a vote.
President Pine, members of the Board of Supervisors, Ms. Jensen, Mr. Byers. I'm Ann Stillman, Deputy Director of Engineering and Resources Protection for the Department of Public Works. I'm here in Jim Porter, the director's absence. The items before you relate to the sewer rates for fiscal year 2014-15 for two county governed districts, namely, the Burlingame Hills Sewer Maintenance District and the Crystal Springs County Sanitation District, as well as the sewer service charges for fiscal year 2014-15 for all 10 of the sewer and sanitation districts governed by your board. The 10 sewer and sanitation districts governed by your board provide sanitary sewage collection, transport, treatment, and disposal services, as well as field and office services to approximately 12,000 residences, businesses, schools, and institutions in the 10 areas of the county. Virtually all of the revenue to provide these services in each district is generated from a user fee or a sewer service charge. The sewer service charges for the districts are collected on the property tax bill. These charges are based on the sewer service rates approved by your board. In 2012, your board approved the sewer service rates for eight of the 10 sewer and sanitation districts for five years, beginning in 2012, '13, through fiscal years 2016, '17. The rates for the Burlingame and the Crystal Springs District at that time were set for one year. At the board's direction, the department has been working with homeowner association representatives from the Burlingame and Crystal Springs districts to address specific issues unique to those districts, and have been recommending rates to your board annually. Because both districts continue to face some financial uncertainties related to future downstream capital projects, and impacts of the Baykeeper Consent Decree on the Burlingame Hills Sewer Maintenance District, and the Cease and Desist Order from the Regional Water Quality Control Board on the Crystal Springs County Sanitation District, it remains prudent to set rates annually for these two districts. The department has recommended that the sewer service rates for 2014-15 remain at $1,595 per year, per residential unit equivalent, for the Burlingame Hills Sewer Maintenance District, and $1,350 per year, per residential equivalent unit, for the Crystal Springs County Sanitation District. Setting these rates for the Burlingame and Crystal Springs districts can be accomplished by adopting an ordinance to amend Section 4.32.020 of the San Mateo County Ordinance Code, setting the rates at the same level as they were for fiscal year 2013-14. The ordinance was previously introduced on June 3. The ordinance was previously introduced on June 3rd to your Board, with a second reading occurring today. Additionally, your Board set July 15, 2014, today, in your chambers as the time and place for the public hearing to receive testimony on the sewer service charges calculated based on the sewer rates. The Department has prepared the Sewer Service Charges Report based on the rates set forth in the ordinance in June. The charges in the report are to be levied on each parcel receiving sewer service within the 10 districts. The charges will appear on the property tax bills for the 2014-15 fiscal year. The Department is requesting that your Board receive testimony during the public hearing and determine that the charges in the report be imposed for fiscal year 1415. If approved, the Department will file the necessary report and charges with the Controller's Office, such that the charges can be placed on the property tax roll. The resolution being considered also authorizes the Director of Public Works to refund any overcharges resulting from data, data entry, or computation errors. That concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you for your report. Thorough as always. And do we have any questions for Ms. Stillman? Okay, seeing none, we do need to have a hearing. So I'll open the public hearing if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this matter. Is that related to this item?
I'm referring to the one that includes the 10 districts, and I'm not sure if Pacifica is included in one of them because they're not listed. But I want to bring to your attention that Pacifica has passed an ordinance requiring all residents to have unilateral sewers installed before they sell their properties. Under a lawsuit by the Regional Water Board because of numerous bills, a portion of the money could be used towards the expense ranging from free installation to Lindemar to $1,000 per resident on a first come, first basis. I have asked the Mayor, the City Manager, and the City Attorney for their opinion on the Poland versus Brook Trail lawsuit, which states that when it comes to service, everyone is to be treated equally. I am asking the county to hold off on any increases in fees regarding Pacifica at this time until the issue is resolved. Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, Pacifica is not included in any of our county districts. Ms. Stillman, can you?
That is correct. Pacifica is not included in any of the 10 county sewer and sanitation districts.
Right. Okay, thank you for your comments. Any other speakers on the, on this item?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think unless there's any discussion, we can take a motion.
I'll move the ordinance and also the resolution and also authorizing the Director of Public Works to refund any overcharges resulting from data, data entry, or computation errors. So that would include one through five on our agenda here.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That concludes that matter. We will next act as the governing board of County Service Area Number Eight, which is North Fair Oaks, concerning the garbage and recycle collection service charges in that area. Ms. Stillman.
The item before you now relates to garbage and recyclables collection service charges for County Service Area Number Eight for fiscal year 2014-15. County Service Area Number Eight, or CSA8, encompasses the North Fair Oaks area of the county. The powers of CSA8 include refuse, refuse, and garbage collection. Currently, the garbage and recyclables collection service in CSA8 is provided by Recology San Mateo County under a franchise agreement with the county. CSA8 garbage and recyclable rates are set annually, and the 2014 rates were approved by your Board on December 10, 2013. Revenue to pay Recology for providing services to residential dwellings in CSA8 generated by charging fees based on adopted rates and pickup units for each affected parcel. These fees are defined and adopted each fiscal year in the garbage and collection, garbage and recyclables collection services charges report, or the charges report for short, for CSA8. And these charges are placed on the property tax roll. Commercial and industrial customers that do not have charges placed on the county tax roll and customers that are receiving additional services are billed directly by Recology in accordance with the franchise agreement. The county ordinance code requires that the Board hold a public hearing to consider public testimony prior to adopting the charges report. Your Board set today, July 15, 2014, in your chambers as the time and place for a public hearing to receive such testimony. The Department has prepared the charges report based on the rates adopted by your Board previously and in accordance with the county ordinance code. The charges in the report are to be levied on each parcel identified and will appear on the property tax bills for fiscal year 2014-15. The Department is requesting that your Board receive testimony during the public hearing and determine that the charges in the report be imposed for fiscal year 2014-15. If approved, the Department will file the necessary report and charges with the Controller's Office, such that the charges can be placed on the property tax roll. The resolution being considered also authorizes the Director of Public Works to refund any overcharges resulting from data, data entry, or computation errors. That concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you for your report. Any questions for Ms. Stillman?
I just have one question. I'm kind of surprised that the charges are actually placed on property tax, at least in many communities. I thought Recology bills directly as opposed to putting on the property tax. And the other is if you had, if it was a apartment building, for example, how do you, how does that work?
So each agency can determine how they want to bill, whether they want Recology to bill their customers, or whether they want to bill themselves, and typically it's placed on the property tax bill. For the CSA8, we bill on the property tax bill, there's a minimum level of service for the residential dwellings, and we find that that's the least expensive way to bill and to ensure that people take garbage and recyclable services. So it depends on the single-family dwellings, the multi-units are billed as well, and then, as I mentioned, depending on the type of service, commercial can be billed by Recology separately. So it really is up to the jurisdiction. For the county franchised area, different, all the other areas that we have, that we have garbage for, with, under a franchise agreement, Recology does the billing there.
Good question. Any other questions? We'll open the public hearing as required. Any speakers on this item?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any discussion, otherwise we could have a motion here.
I'll move to adopt the resolution, including items one, two, and three.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So our next item, which will also have a public hearing, is, concerns the Tax Exempt Fiscal Responsibility Act and the California Municipal Finance Authority, under which the Board of Supervisors approves, is being asked to approve a loan to the Woodside Priory School. Mr. Byers, will you be speaking?
Yes, that's me. Thank you, President Pine, and honorable members of the Board. The Benedictine Fathers of the Priory, or otherwise known as Woodside Priory School, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, has requested that the California Municipal Finance Authority, otherwise known as the CFMA, serve as the issuer of a loan, up to $10 million, to fund or finance some construction and improvements to the school facilities. As the Board of Supervisors is well aware by now, I know you've had a number of these matters come before you, particularly over the last few years. In order for the loan to qualify as a tax exempt loan under IRS law, the county, as the CMFA member whose territory or jurisdiction the project is cited, must conduct a public hearing process, also called a TAFRA hearing, to allow members of the community to comment on the, on the loan. After you close the public hearing, the Board, of course, is to consider adopting a resolution approving the issuance by the CMFA of the $10 million loan to the Woodside Priory School. You will recall, of course, that if you were to approve the loan, the loan is the sole responsibility of the borrower, and there's no, you know, financial obligation indebtedness or liability that inures to the, to the county if you were to take that action. So unless you have any questions, I will go ahead and submit this to you. The next step, of course, would be to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Byers, for your explanation. It's always helpful to hear that because this is a little bit out of the ordinary. Any questions for Mr. Byers? Otherwise, we will open the hearing, seeing no speakers.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion made and seconded to close the hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
We can now take a resolution?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll get to the action part of the meeting, or at least the little more, little more colorful part of the meeting. We have a series of Director's Reports. I should mention before we go on, though, that at 1:30 today, we will have a hearing concerning the Toddle Child Care application that's been appealed to our Board, that's at 1:30 today. But moving on to, through the next item on our agenda, we do have a series of three reports from various departments. So we start with Department of Parks and Marlene Finley.
Good morning, members of the Board and Ms. Jensen. It's delightful to be here today. I'm very excited to share with you the performance of the Parks Department. So who are we? The Parks Department? Do I have a? Oh, there we go. Who are we? People that can't run a projector. Here we go. No, we're the stewards. We're the stewards of the natural and cultural treasures. We provide safe and accessible parks and recreation and learning opportunities that enhance the community's quality of life. That's our mission, and that's what I'm going to report on today. So our first measure in our performance report is the number of annual park visits. And as you can see on these graphs, our visits are up slightly, although we average about 2 million visits a year. Our volunteer hours range around 30,000 volunteer hours per year, although you see that uptick in 2012, 2013, and that was the year of Edgewood, a partnership with the San Mateo County Parks Foundation, where we did targeted volunteer work surrounding the Edgewood Park. Our grant dollars awarded per dollar invested, this is, this shows how much our return for every dollar invested we get. Right now, we're averaging about $32 in grants for every dollar we spend in the salary of the person that's helping us go after those grants and manage that grant program. And this, this is really good. We're also 100% successful in the grants that we apply for in county parks, because we do a lot of pre-work, knowing what we're capable of doing and understanding what the grant application process is. On our capital projects, I want, I want you to, I'd like to draw your attention to this. In 2011, 2012, we completed eight capital projects. 12, 13, eight capital projects. 2013 to 14, we completed 17 capital projects with the help of DPW, Department of Public Works. And now, as we look towards this year, 2014 to 2015, we have 21 capital projects to complete that are funded, plus 50 additional small projects. So we have a big workload that we're prepared to work on this year. That's a huge jump. Now we're going to turn to our enterprise, and that's the Coyote Point Marina. And here, our performance measure is the cost per birth. So this is the ratio of our investment of dollars per birth. That's 542 slips. And you can see the big uptick in 2013-14, that was the construction of Dock 29, adding those additional slips at Dock 29. Our next project in 2014-2015 that we're working on is the fuel dock, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. Here's our percentage of births filled, our occupancy rate. As you can see, we had a dip in 2012-2013. We're, we're up a little bit more in 2013, 14 to 78 percent, and our target for 2014-2015 is 80 percent. And we believe we're going to get there because we're going to get the fuel dock back in. I met with the Marina occupants. We had a, our annual meeting just a week ago, and they expressed how important that fuel dock is in recruiting people to the Marina. Let's talk about budget. As you can see, our total requirements for this past year was about 20.1 million. And we, of that, our total sources, that is outside the net county cost, was 14,266,075. And then our, our net county cost is 6 million, 6.4 million. So you may wonder, what is the total sources, what goes into that amount? That's donations, grants, loans, and our revenue from our rentals of picnic sites and camp sites and other facilities and, and services. So as we look towards 2014 to 2015, our total requirements are down slightly. Our total sources are, we anticipate are going to be down, and that's because we don't have the big grants reimbursements, such as Devil's Slide Trail and Dock 29 and some of those major projects. And our net county cost is up, and that's been approved, thankfully, to the budget that you approved. And some of those increases in our net county costs that you approved include project manager, funding for a project manager for that large amount of projects that we have coming up this year, and also a new position to help with interpretive programming, a three-year agile workforce position, which we filled. So let's turn to highlights. What have we accomplished last year and what do we look forward to this year? Well, as you know, we've added more, more parks, more park acres, and more trails. Here you see the Lomomar Redwood addition. This is now added to our memorial camp, our memorial park, and this added 174 acres. We also have the Wicklow addition to Quarry Park, which added 478 acres. That's open to the public now as an extension of that county park. And Butino Crest East was added to the Puskadero Creek Park. Also, we added 70 acres at Devil's Slide, and we added a little, a little less than an acre at Moss Beach, our new Moss Beach Playground, a little less than half an acre for the Friendship Park, and we're working on the Daly City Sand Dunes. So let's take a look at trails added. We added, or in, we added 1.3 miles of trail for Devil's Slide Trail, and we're, we're in the process of adding a mile to the Bay Ridge Trail, and that's at the Skylawn Cemetery. So that's in process. That's an easement for a total of 188 miles of county trails. Daly City Sand Dunes, this passed unanimously as a recommendation to the Board. You'll be seeing that in an upcoming agenda to acquire, to accept this donation of 3.23 acres. This is the home of the threatened, or endangered lusenja plant, a very rare plant. This is a rare ecosystem, the remnant of relic sand dunes in San Francisco. We had a lot of people testify at our Parks Commission meeting in favor of accepting this donation. And as I conclude on our additional acres and parks, I wanted to share our appreciation for the help from real property and from the County Council's Office in all these acquisitions. It really took a team effort. Okay, so let's, also, I wanted to mention, as we wrap up on the 2013-2015 highlights, I once again wanted to mention the 21 capital I once again wanted to mention the twenty-one capital projects that we're working on. And just to share a few of those projects, um, what we, what, what we're working on now and expect to complete. Crystal Springs Trail South of Dam, very similar to the Sawyer Camp Trail. Also, Crystal Springs Trail South of Ninety-two, another addition to that length of trail along Crystal Springs. We're working on new playgrounds, uh, new playground that's going in next month at Coyote Point. It's going to have a pirate theme. We're really excited about it and we're planning a little celebration or pirate party around that. The Moss Beach Playground, um, as soon as we have the green light, we're going to be ordering the new playground equipment for Moss Beach. Flood Park Ball Field and Playground Improvements. Um, we have leads on a, some turf for the ball field improvements. And also, we are submitting an application to Kaboom for the Playground. That's a partner that works with us on Playground Construction. Well, we're also working on the promenade at Coyote Point, the fuel dock I mentioned, some water system repairs at Memorial Park Campground. Right now, if you went out to Fold Your Stable Arena, you'd see the arena being totally reconstructed and new base rock being put in and a new surface and a new fence. And we just, last week, opened the third restroom at Hutter Park, the Toyon Campground. That restroom's been closed for years. And we reconfigured the campground so that we can have family camping midweek and group camping on the weekend. So making better use of that campground that is not typically full during midweek in the summertime. Volunteer programs. Um, we have thirty trained trail ambassadors now for the Devil's Slide Trail who are doing a fantastic job out there. Contacting the public, sharing information, um, and, uh, making sure that people are reading the warning signs and staying on the trails and following the rules. We also have, um, the company Salesforce has, has pledged us two thousand hours of volunteer time for this coming year. And that's for the Unipara Sarah Park. They, they are adopting Unipara Sarah Park as volunteers. And another twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen highlight is the Natural Resource Management Program. We now can be stewards of the natural resources. We have a Natural Resource Manager, Ramona Oretchik is on board. And we're working on our, standing up our program and providing a framework for that program. And we've already started work. We, um, first job was to replant these ferns along the Dardanelle Trail, our first restoration project. Now that we have a restoration, uh, Natural Resource Program. Another project that we've been working on through, with our Natural Resource Management Program and our rangers. Is to improve the forest health and to provide, um, uh, additional, um, safety by trimming some of the trees in the Cypress Grove. This, as you know, became very controversial. People wanted to make sure that we maintain the beauty of this Cypress Grove near Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. So this, this photograph was by, is by professional photographer Stephen Johnson of Pacifica. And he volunteered at our last public meeting to help us do some photo shopping to show people what is, what's it going to look like after we do this light trimming? And take out some of the dead trees. So he's currently doing that right now. Okay, let's talk about the future, twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen and what we're looking forward to. Well, we want to enhance and build upon our successful volunteer program by having dedicated volunteer stewardship corps. So these would be certified, um, stewardship volunteers that would work across all parks. And we've been meeting with the Natural Resource Coalition and others to determine how we can do that and expand both the breadth and the depth of our stewardship mandate through our mission. We also want to expand environmental literacy. And as you know, this is one of the four goal areas in the strategic plan that you approved in March of twenty thirteen. This means more, more programming, more kids out in the parks, more social media and more interaction with our partners. We want, you know, in the past, when I look at the, the mission of the parks and the, the history of our, our parks in San Mateo County. There's a lot of reference to dispersed and passive recreation. And that's very good and we want to continue that. And we also want active and engaged and we get that through programming. Also, we want to establish baseline data for natural resources and geographic information system. We, um, the Student Conservation Association was successful in securing a fifty thousand dollar grant to get us started. And the SCA intern starts in September. Ramona, right now, is working with the Information Services, I S D Department, um, and others to determine how do we set? How do we stand up a GIS program in parks that interfaces with planning and with I S D and with all the other departments that are using GIS? So this will bring us up to par with our neighboring, uh, Natural Resource Management Agencies, neighboring park agencies and open space. And it'll help us make better decisions through analysis because we'll be armed with the natural resource data and the place-based information to make good decisions for our county parks. Also, I wanted to mention in fifteen to seventeen, we're going to work on, we're going to continue to work on trails. And the one I wanted to highlight, um, the area I want to highlight is the connector trails along Devil's Slide. So this is the Green Valley Trail to the south of Devil's Slide and the Pedro Point Trail to the north of Devil's Slide. This will give people a, a, a more comprehensive experience along the coastal trail and provide parking nodes that are so important to, to disperse people and get people along that trail enjoying the, the coastal area. Healthy parks, healthy people. This is our partnership. It's an initiative throughout the Bay Area with the health system. And Jean Fraser and I are prepared to sign on with healthy parks and healthy people. For years, we've talked about our parks being outdoor gyms. And finally, we're starting to see people using our parks for health, for the health benefits. Whether it's mental health, uh, and, or physical health, all aspects of health. That's what parks can be for. And we're ready to work together with the, with the health system to do this. And lastly, we want a banana slug wagon. And what is this? We want to get, we want to get kids and we want to get seniors. We want to get people that don't have transportation to visit some of our distant parks like Fitzgerald Marine Reserve and Memorial Park out. And this is what the communities are asking for. We don't have public transportation to some of those parks on the, on the coast side and our population's on the bay side. So this is one of the things that other parks districts have been very successful, East Bay Regional Parks, San Francisco Park and Recreation. So we thought our band would be the banana slug wagon. So that's what we're working towards. And in conclusion, I, I want to mention that the Parks Department is back. We're on the path to the future. We have a vision, we have a strategy, we have partners, we have your support, we have a talented staff and we're ready to go. So thank you, I'm ready to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for that terrific, terrific presentation. It's incredible, um, uh, what you've achieved and, and the momentum behind the Parks Department and, uh, uh, you know, we couldn't be, couldn't be happier. So we'll open, uh, open to some questions from the board.
I don't really have any questions. It's, uh, it's just a fabulous and exciting report and an exciting, exciting time. We've been able, like you said, as the Park Department's back, we've been able to put some resources in there and you have made really good use of them. So, um, it's, um, you know, just fabulous. I certainly liked that idea of the banana slug bus. So congratulations, you've done a fabulous job in a short period of time.
Thank you, Marlene, this is terrific. I have a question about Coyote Point and the, the Marina. Is, uh, is there, is there interest in, in leasing some of those slots or is boating kind, is boating on the, on, on the rise or middle or kind of?
What we're seeing is, um, at post-recession, it's picking up again. There is, the, people are getting back into boats. Uh, the demand is rising. But we really need that fuel dock because Dock Twenty-nine's for large boats. Large boats need fuel. So that's what we really need to push for, for is completing that dock.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just had a quick question. You mentioned the banana slug bus and you mentioned the East Bay has it, that you mentioned San Francisco. Are you saying we're going to have this or is, it's a goal of yours to have this?
It's a dream.
It's a dream.
Yeah, it's a vision.
And my question for those that have these buses, was, were they, uh, got, uh, obtained by grants or how did they, how did they manage to?
I believe so, we're going to look more into it. It's, it's just an idea as we start looking into the future. And we think, we think we can get grants, get some support.
Okay. And I really like the idea that you've brought in some of the business community too, to help with some of our parks and put, I mean, two thousand hours is a lot of time for a company to put volunteers in our parks. And I think that's great because, uh, we have so many of them and they stretch all up and down the county. It's nice to focus on, you know, all of them or as many of them as we can. So that's terrific, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for that great report, Marlene, and all the enthusiasm and energy. I'm embarrassed to say, I didn't realize that camping was now allowed in Hutter Park. Did I hear you right?
Yeah, the group sites been, has been open, Toyon. And we have some other areas that accommodate group camping. So what, what we've done with Memorial Campground closed is, um, we walked, took a walk through about two weeks ago. And since there's no use midweek, we thought, well, why don't we open it for family camping midweek? So that's, that, that's the model that we're looking at. No open fires. We did a lot of fuel management in there to get ready. We put individual posts for each campsite so we could manage it as in, in individual sites. So we're testing the waters.
So, uh, still not clear, can individuals go there and camp now?
Yes, midweek, yeah.
Midweek, very good.
We haven't advertised it yet because the ba, because the bathrooms just got fixed and the sign's up this weekend.
Great, good. Any idea on the cost of the banana slug wagon?
No, not yet.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Slocum will be camping out there probably tonight. Midweek. I, I just had a couple, a couple of quick questions if I could. First, you know, on the Coyote Point, um, a week or so ago, I had the opportunity to kind of tour the bayfront around Redwood City through all the sloughs and, uh, along with Supervisor Slocum. And the, uh, one of the individuals was kind of leading the tour, uh, Jeff Bird from Saris Regis. He, he didn't appreciate that we were putting a fuel dock in and, and he, and he thought that a fuel dock was incredibly needed. Because if I understood correctly, I guess there's no fuel dock at all on the, you know, anywhere in the south, south bay. You have to go all the way to Alameda, according to Jeff, to get your fuel. So I would think this would be an incredible draw. And, and as part of our tour, for the first time, I visited the relatively new Marina that's built up by, what's it called? Pacific Park, uh, which is enormous and I think they're expanding it. So, um, you know, we, uh, we ought to get, try to get some, uh, that's our competitor, I guess. But they don't have a fuel dock and they don't have any plans for a fuel dock. Just a couple of quick questions, you know, on your budget, I don't know if you can flip back to that, but. You know, we always combine operating budget with capital budget. And, and could you just kind of give us a rough sense for what your operating, the operating budget is now? One more.
Our operating budget? Eduardo, Eduardo's my man, Management Analyst Three. Do you have, can you answer that?
I guess, were you asking us as far as the total requirements?
Well, when you don't, take out capital and grants and run the parks on a day-to-day basis for staff or all those sort of things.
Well, that, that includes everything. That's, that's everything, including capital projects that are dedicated to just the parks.
I went back out the capital projects and what's, what's, what's the operating?
I would have to get back to you, I don't have the number on top of my head.
Okay.
I can get back to you.
Do you have an estimate? I always used to, I, I guess I'm of, of you that it was around.
It's about ten million is what, what I.
Yeah, maybe you could get that.
Yeah, I, I would have to give you the number, the exact number, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks. And then, uh, if you could flip to the slides of showing all the trails around Devil's Slide. And, uh, while Supervisor Horsley is expert on this, I've always had a hard time understanding this, the whole issue where we, we had this connect connectivity gap, um, between Pacifica and Devil's Slide. And, you know, maybe since we have this pretty map here, maybe we could, could you just kind of walk through that a little bit? Like we're, you, as I understand, you can't, there's an easement problems and you can't connect between certain trails.
Right, so.
Could you just walk through that for a second?
I'm hoping my green little pointer will point. So this is the Green Valley Trail. This is privately owned. We have a ingress egress easement that Caltrans gave us. But, um, we're looking for a more secure easement right in here from the private property owner that owns the property out at this bunker. So that, that's an area I'm working on. Um, and then the other, and so is Supervisor Horsley. And the other is this San Pedro Trail at the north end of Devil's Slide. And there's a property owner right within the Pacifica, Pacifica, um, boundary that, um, we, we don't have access across his land. Then there's Shamrock Ranch over the top too. There's privately owned Shamrock Ranch above the tunnel.
So if, if I understand correctly, so the, the trail that's kind of closest to the ocean, that, that's where the easement problems reside? I mean, you, you could walk way out and around, but you can't. Are the other trails accessible now? With the exception of the ones that closest to the coast?
On the north side of Devil's Slide Trail, are you speaking? It's Pedro Point? You can't, you can't really get to Pacifica there because of that private property and it's real steep too.
Can I just answer some of that? You know, the Green Valley, when, when we were working with the state on the Devil's Slide Task Force, we were told that we had an easement. Turns out that the easement, part of it actually expires in twenty sixteen and the easement does not really give us authorization for a, a trail. Despite the fact that we, it was represented that it was, that we did have that easement. But when we actually went to examine it, we discovered, lo and behold, we didn't have it. So that's why there's been a delay in terms of constructing the Green Valley Trail. If, once we get that easement, then we will be able to build that trail. And it goes to Gray Whale Cove. We have a plan to improve that. It's currently a pretty large parking area owned by, I think that it's the State Parks, if I'm not mistaken. In the, the, uh, the Pacifica side, in two thousand and eleven, Supervisor Groom and I were on the TA at the time. We got three hundred and sixty thousand, what we thought was the value of the, of essentially the easement on the Pacifica side. Once we got that funding in twenty eleven, we discovered that the owner actually wanted considerably more money. And so we, the, it's actually in the city of Pacifica. So Pacifica has been negotiating with the owner. We offered to do eminent domain. They declined our offer and they are in negotiations. But, you know, had, had the, the original valuation had gone through, we would have had trails on both sites connecting, you know, uh, Pacifica always through the mid-coast. The advantage of that is that you wouldn't have to, you know, our parking lots, which are small, uh, because there's only a limited amount of space. Most of our egress and, you know, entrance issues would have been solved had we been able to, uh, deal with both those issues more, more expeditiously. But they, you know, they're in the works and Pacifica indicates that they have had some movement with the, the owner of this particular property.
All right, thanks for that update. It's, I've never quite, quite been able to visualize it, so that's really helpful. And then my, my, my final question, uh, Marlene, is there was a recent civil grand jury report about Devil's Slide and there are some concerns about safety. Do you, what are, what are your reflections on that?
Well, uh, we're already looking at the fencing again. We've, we've added fencing since the grand jury's visits. So we added additional, um, fencing to block, um, uh, people trespassing onto the bunker, bunker hill site. And we're taking a look at the guardrail that they mentioned in their report to see if there's, um, some way of modifying that to address their concerns. We had AT&T, um, cell service, um, out looking on Thursday to see what, where we might need, need equipment to get coverage in the Tom Lantos Tunnel as well as along Devil's Slide Trail where there's some dead spots. And they were pretty hopeful and, and they had many ideas. So lastly, there was a request or recommendation in the grand jury's report, uh, to study horses, um, use on that trail. And, uh, yeah, we'll be responding to that.
It's just on both of us. We did at one time think about having, um, we, of course, had the K-rails and we thought about having cables. But, you know, it, it ends up having, it, it does, it clutters up the view and so we didn't do that. And horses really, uh, to get a horse up, you'd have to, you can't go on Highway One with a horse. It just is not, it's not feasible. The other thing is on horses, they, they don't do well on asphalt and, and especially if it gets foggy and slippery. And what they had asked us to do, and again, the Devil's Slide Task Force, was to remove some of the asphalt and create a, essentially a dirt path. And we declined to do that. So it, it really, horses, uh, should not, I mean, it's, it's just, it's not practical.
Yeah, I guess that'd be kind of putting horses on Crystal Springs or something. But, uh, thanks for those updates. So again, I would just join my colleagues and thank you for fantastic work.
Thank you.
You know, I, I mean, there's so many things that I could cite, but, you know, I, I will just, uh, particularly point out, uh, how, how great it is that we're doing so much with youth, environmental literacy and, and the programming, right? I mean, it's been, because parks have been, uh, you know, we haven't been able to make the investments in the past. Now we're, you know, bringing these, uh, important programs that, that will get people there and enthused and learn about nature. And, um, so it's fantastic. So thank you again.
Thanks, and thanks from all the staff too. Thanks, and thanks from all the staff, too.
All right, we'll now move to Planning and Building Department. Mr. Monowitz, you have a kind of tough act to follow here, but, uh, we know you're up to it.
That is for sure. Uh, good morning, President Pine, members of the board, Ms. Jensen, and Ms. Byers. I'm pleased to be here this morning to present to you the Planning and Building Department's, uh, performance and accomplishments during the past fiscal year, our, uh, objectives and major projects for the current fiscal year, and our priorities for the future year. Okay, the Planning and Building Department's mission is to serve the county and its communities through the preparation and administration of land use plans and regulations by ensuring development proposals conform with applicable zoning and building requirements. And to do this, we have day-to-day interactions with our citizens, our business owners, and other departments and agencies, in which we strive to provide the highest level of service. And we work in a collaborative manner to protect and enhance our communities, our economy, and our natural environment. The number of building permits processed by the department is a key indicator of our level of productivity, department-wide, as it involves all the various sections in the department. As shown here, the department has experienced a steady increase in our permit activity since 2011 and 12, which we expect will continue into the near future. As I previously mentioned, providing high-quality customer service is a primary objective, and one that we have been largely successful at in the past. As we continue to experience a growing volume in our permits, maintaining this level of service will pose some challenges. And to meet this challenge, we're actively working on adapting our personnel and processing system so that we can continue to obtain a rating of good or better by at least ninety percent of our customers. Improving the methods by which we track our performance is another important objective for the upcoming year. As shown by this slide, we have reached our performance targets only fifty percent of the time in previous years, and are aiming to bring this up to seventy-five percent. The use of new programs and technologies will help us achieve this goal. With regard to outcomes, the department plays an important role in responding to issues associated with climate change, such as by applying energy efficiency standards to new construction, by addressing the link between transportation, housing, and jobs in our land use plans, and by locating new development out of harm's way whenever feasible. To monitor our effectiveness in one of these areas, we have set a goal for reducing the amount of greenhouse gas emissions from new development to nineteen ninety levels by the year 2020. As shown by this slide, a fifteen percent annual reduction in our baseline emission levels is necessary to accomplish this goal. Um, let's see here. Okay, with regard to overall performance, the department strives to process our permits in a timely and effective manner. And the, uh, time required to do that depends often on the complexity of our projects. In this slide, we're highlighting those projects that tri- trigger public hearings, which are often the most complex. And our goal is to process those projects when, within a four-month period, on average. With regard to the department's fiscal situation, we have a total operating budget of about twelve million dollars in 2013, fourteen, which will be reduced to about eleven million dollars in this fiscal year. And this is due to the completion of some significant grant-funded technology improvements. The amount of general fund money required to support the department's budget remains steady, at a little over three million, and s- uh, as do staffing levels, which slightly increased from forty-seven full-time positions to forty-eight. Now for the fun part, our highlights. So as you may recall, uh, the department recently completed its update to the county's Williamson Act program, and we continue to work with contract holders to make sure that the existing contracts comply with these new program provisions. Also in the area of agriculture, we are continuing to, uh, work towards streamlining our permit requirements for farm labor, housing, and other agricultural-related projects. The photo to the right provides an aerial view of the Princeton, of Princeton and Pillar Point Harbor, and I'm pleased to report that the department is making good progress towards the completion of the Plan Princeton project, as well as its, uh, transportation management plan component, which I'll talk to about in a li- in a little while, and I'm full supporter of the banana slug bus. I think we can, uh, help, uh, move that along. Also with regard to transportation, the department is actively working with a team of professional engineers to design Highway One pedestrian crossing improvements, including one that provides access to Gray Whale Cove, as shown in the picture to the left. Designing and implementing Middlefield Road improvements in collaboration with the department works in the larger North Fair Oaks community is another important transportation project that we're actively engaged in. Completing the first phase of North Fair Oaks zoning amendments, which addresses the southern portion of the commercial district along Middlefield Road, shown by the picture to the left, is a key project that the department intends to complete within the current budget cycle, as is implementation and completion of our updated housing elements. Affordable housing opportunities such as those provided by the Tresal Glen Project in unincorporated Colma, as shown by the picture to the right, is an example of some of the benefits that result from keeping our housing policies and programs up to date. Other policies and regulations that have been prioritized for improvement include those that regulate subdivisions, grading, and tree removal. Some of the key objectives of these updates will be to simplify and expedite the permit, the processing of these types of projects, while ensuring that they provide maximum protection of the county's precious natural resources. With regard to major projects, the department will be processing the revised Big Wave project, as well as the Ascension Heights subdivision, the sites of which are shown by these photographs. The department continues to work on its stormwater compliance program to ensure that we effectively address new regulations established by the state and regional water quality control boards. We also continue to make an effort to enhance our overall code compliance program, and have recently hired a new officer to assist us in this regard. In terms of other program improvements, we've recently launched a new public-facing database, which allows anyone with an internet connection to check on the status of a permit application or a code compliance case. It will also enable applicants to submit their application materials electronically in the near future. Finally, I'd like to mention two other important transportation and coastal access projects we are pursuing. These include a collaborative effort with Caltrans to install a seawall and stairway along Highway One at Surfers Beach to protect the highway and to provide improved access to the beach and ocean, as well as a larger, uh, collaborative effort with parks and the midcoast community to design and construct improvements to various coastal trails, including a multi-use recreational trail that will run parallel to Highway One. In terms of our priorities for future years, we will continue our efforts to update the North Fair Oaks zoning regulations. As shown in this slide, uh, our Phase Two effort will be the northern areas of, uh, Middlefield Road. It also includes the El Camino Corridor, and Phase Three will be the Spring Street industrial area. We will continue to respond to the issues and impacts of climate change and sea level rise, including taking a close look at our bluff setback policies in our coastal areas. We will continue to enhance our housing and transportation opportunities, and although my picture of the bus is nowhere near as cool as the banana slug bus, um, I think we sh- have some common objectives there. And the transportation management plan that we're currently working on really provides an opportunity for us to identify the methods by which we can help provide access to our parks. We, uh, will be continuing our efforts to keep our general plan up to date, and some of the elements that are in need of update include our, uh, land use, open space, and conservation elements so that we can, uh, pursue the sort of stewardship of our natural lands that our parks provide such a great example of. And then finally, to really make the use of our new technologies and tools to provide excellent customer service. Uh, the launch of our new Exela system has had some bumps in the road, and we continue to work with, um, all the users to maximize its usefulness, and I am, uh, confident that in a few months' time that we will have it running smoothly and effectively, and provide, uh, some very, um, uh, positive benefits for all our applicants, as well as our community members who want to stay involved with the, uh, permit processing. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Monowitz. Very, very helpful. Questions?
I just had one quick question. You have a slide here that says number of building projects finalized, um, which obviously, as you mentioned, continues to grow. Is there any backlog, or are you pretty much on top of these, uh, projects as they come through? I know you mentioned something about four months for some permitting and, or hearings, things like that. Are you feeling like you're ahead of the game, or with the game, or?
I, I feel like we are, um, ahead, well, with the game with regard to applications that are coming in currently. There is a backlog of applications that were ha- previously received by the department, which, for one reason or another, oftentimes, um, not for any reasons attributable to the Planning and Building Department, just stalled due to lack of processing, lack of submission of required information, lack of calling for final inspections and so forth. And we are making a concerted effort to clean up all those unresolved building permit applications. In fact, we, uh, submitted a, uh, SMC Saves Grant application to, uh, provide additional funding to help support that effort. Whether or not we receive that grant, we intend to continue that effort so that we can get to the point where we have a clean slate, and all building permits will be processed within the, um, timeframes that we've laid out here.
That's good. I, I know we ran into this, this was many, many years ago, we were really far behind, and we actually added some staff to, to get, clean all that up, to bring us up speed, and I know over time that does happen, things get, fall back a little bit, but, you know, I'd like you to be sure to keep us posted if you find that, one, you don't get that grant, and two, we still need to, you know, some more momentum there to get those, the backlog cleaned up. Cause I think we had a task force at that time, and a lot of the people that were at that table, basically, we were trying to raise rates, and they said, you can't raise rates, you're not even getting the job done. We've come a long way, and you've done a tremendous job, but if you find yourself in that situation, it'd be better to know it ahead of time than to find out after the fact that you, you know, you got bogged down so much that you couldn't get these things done. And if we need to, to do something about that, I would prefer we catch up as quickly as possible.
I certainly agree and appreciate that.
Thank you. Couple of quick questions. That four-month chart that Supervisor Tissier referred to, um, I think you said most complex projects, um, related to that four-month, uh, period, is, how does that compare with other counties in the areas? Is four months a pretty fast time? Is it a lengthy period of time? What's the comparison there?
Um, honestly, I, I don't have data to provide that comparison, but that's something I'd be happy to look into and report back to the board on.
Thank you. Another quick question, um, it involves Public Works also, and obviously Planning Department, but there's a, a group working on an application called See Click Fix, which would allow a citizen to, uh, take a picture of a pothole and, and send it in, uh, via their smartphone. How, what's the status of that, uh, implementation?
I participated on the panel that reviewed various proposals to provide that service. My understanding is we've selected a vendor, and that, uh, we're in the process of, um, working with them to complete the contractual agreements and get that project moving forward. Um, perhaps, uh, Deputy Director, Manager Jensen could speak to that.
Through the President Supervisor Slocum, um, Public Works is going to be holding the contract with See Click Fix. They're in the process of, um, establishing that contract, so we expect within the next month or two that, uh, we will be working on implementation. One of the key components of the implementation will be linking with Exela and linking with Hanson, the Public Works and the Planning and Building Tools. So once somebody clicks their cellphone, a task will automatically go to both the Planning Department or to the appropriate department, whether it's Planning and Building for Code Enforcement or Public Works, if this is a, um, something illegal dumping in a public right-of-way.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Monowitz, um, a couple of years ago during one of the budget hearings, we talked a lot about code enforcement, and did you have enough, uh, staff to do code enforcement? And I see you've added one person, but, um, how do, how is code enforcement going and, and rap, and response time?
Code enforcement is responding to complaints in our, uh, generally a forty-eight hour period. So if somebody calls and files a complaint, in most cases, we have staff out there within forty-eight hours in terms of business days. I think the area in which we could, uh, continue to improve is providing the information that we obtained from those investigations to the interested public, the folks who are filing the complaints, who want to keep up to date with what we find in terms of the results are in this, of our investigations, and what we're doing about that. Um, the, uh, Exela system provides a good tool for, um, the public to be able to track our various actions, the results of our inspections, and the next steps with, that we'll be undertaking. Um, as I mentioned, we've hit a little, a couple bumps in the road, but we are actively working on trying to perfect that system so that the public can get the information they want in a timely manner.
Thank you, and I think that would be really helpful.
I just have one, one question, um, in the comment, of the, it says percent of customers rating overall satisfaction is good or excellent, it's ninety percent. How do you get that information in the first place? Is it, I mean, is it every single person queried, or is it, uh, only a few people, or?
It's, uh, it's the number of, uh, it's based on the, uh, surveys that we receive. Um, every time somebody goes to our front desk or applies for a permit, um, we request that they fill out a customer satisfaction survey.
So what's the percentage of customers who actually come, who get the survey, actually fill it out?
I do not have that data.
Oh, you just get it from me some other time. I just, also, I'd like to give you, your staff and you a compliment, that we work with you a lot in, out of, uh, in my district, and there's, uh, you know, the Harbor Districts has some, they're doing a strategic plan. And they had a significant number of people show up, as I understand, and, uh, the comments were uniformly, uh, telling the strategic plan that you really ought to look at Plan Princeton. That's something that your office has been, uh, doing. I know you've had a couple hundred people at all your different public outreach meetings and eat, but so it's kind of, I thought it was a validation of the process that you're going through, Plan Princeton, when people at the Harbor District are saying, gee, you ought to mimic what the county is doing at Plan Princeton, so, good job.
Well, thank you for that, and I would, would like to return the thanks to all your staff. Uh, I really value working with them, and I often find that their participation really helps us achieve our objectives, so I look forward to continuing to work with them all.
Thanks, Steve.
Steve, I just had one, one question for you. On the slide about the percent of outcome and efficiency goals and benchmarks, could, could you talk a little bit more about what some of those goals and benchmarks are, or, I mean, is this kind of a whole dashboard of things, or?
Yes, uh, each section has, um, three to four different performance measurements. One of the new ones, which I understand applied all county-wise, are in the area of administration where we need to, um, track the frequency at, which we're providing feedback to our employees. And, um, so, that's on the administrative side. On the, um, long-range planning side, we're tracking things such as emission reductions. On the, uh, planning and building side, it's permit, uh, turnaround times and so forth. The budget report has the full list of all those performance measurements, and, um, I intend to take a hard look at them in this upcoming fiscal year to figure out what adjustments or supplement, how we might supplement them for future years so that we really provide an accurate reading of our performance.
Great, thank you.
Mr. President, could I ask one more question?
Of course.
Um, I wanted to get back to the point that Supervisor Groom was, um, speaking about, which was, um, the code compliance, and then I think you said something like, one of the areas where you thought you could do a better job was getting back to the citizens who had sent in these complaints so that the loop is closed. Uh, I think that's really important, because if the citizen doesn't hear the result, they think, well, the county didn't do anything, or never listened to us, or whatever. And so, maybe at a future point, you could report back on that, or maybe you can comment, comment on the plan right now. But it's sort of love to know when that might start, and how that might work, and wha- what the expectation might be. expectation might be there.
The plan, which has already started, is really to make the most of our new Exela tracking system so that we can put in the results of our inspections and our next steps as quickly as possible and that becomes immediately available to the interested public. One of the things that I'm pursuing is obtaining tablets for our inspectors so that they can input the results of their inspections immediately. And then we need to improve the user friendliness of the system so that when somebody logs into it, they have a clear explanation about how to obtain the information that they're looking for.
Just sort of on that note, what if individuals that file a complaint on something, but they don't have access to computers and all, do we, do we still have a way to get the information back? Do we mail something to them with the response or, I mean?
Yes. To the degree possible, we try and, you know, copy them on our letters to the property owner where we're pursuing resolution so they're, receive all copies of all written correspondence, provided that there's no confidential information in there. We actively monitor our phones so that if somebody wants to call us to just talk about the status of a case, we have staff available to do that. So we try to make ourselves and the information accessible to everyone in any manner that they would request. On occasion, we have complaining parties who request to remain anonymous, in which case we don't have an avenue to provide feedback to them. But for those that are willing to give us their contact information, we really do strive to keep them abreast of what's going on either through, you know, we'll refer them to our tracking system. And if that doesn't work, we'll copy them on written correspondence and be available to discuss the matter over the phone.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you for the presentation and answering all the questions.
Thank you very much.
We're excited to see you in your new role.
Thank you.
All right. Our final department presentation today is from our Agricultural Commissioner, Mr. Crowder.
Good morning, members of the board, President Pine and Deputy County Manager Jensen and Council of Byers. I'm Fred Crowder, I'm the County Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Waits and Measures, and thank you for the opportunity to come and present to you our performance report for the Department of Agriculture and Waits and Measures. I hope I can do this. Let's see, Steve was so facile with jumping back and forth between the slides and I'm not even quite sure I can get to the first one. So I'm also envious of Marlene's simple performance measures. Mine are rather obsequious and require some explanation, but our first slide is going to be our mission is to protect agriculture and environmental resources, ensure the safe use of pesticides, provide consumer protection, ensure equity in the marketplace. Those are actually a combination of 16 different programs that we have of agricultural programs and also Waits and Measures programs. The first two cover the agriculture programs, largely our pest, our pest prevention programs such as pest detection, pest exclusion, pest eradication, and our pesticide use enforcement programs, which entails both agricultural use, structural use, and institutional use. Say at medical facilities, we work with environmental health and concurrent regulations, and we also do illness investigations. The second two, provide consumer protection and ensure equity in the marketplace. Those are our Waits and Measures programs. The consumer protection is a point-of-sale systems inspection so that we go into stores and we check to make sure that the consumers get the lowest advertised price. We actually pull samples off of them, run them across the cash register and check to see what they're charging, and we compare with the lowest advertised price. Equity in the marketplace comes down to our device registration program and, excuse me, our device inspection and regulatory program. There's a registration component to it. But that one, we're making sure that consumers, when you go and buy a gallon of gas, you actually get a gallon of gas, a pound is actually a pound. There's, the equity component of that also extends to the, to the industry itself, is to make sure that everybody's using the same gallon, that competing gas stations use the same gallon, that competing stores are using the same pound, so that there's no shenanigans going on there and everybody's on a level playing field. I guess I need to push this thing here. Our first headline measure is average cost. Wait a minute. I think I jumped ahead here. There we go. Our first headline measure is the average cost per Waits and Measures device inspected. This one is a benchmark and there should be a red line in there because we're comparing ourselves against other Bay Area counties. However, we developed this measure rather, rather late in the process and we are in the process of collecting the, the information from other Bay Area counties. So, but what goes into this, we see that there's about a $62 cost per Waits and Measures device inspected, and this is everything from, I mean, a water meter to a taxi cab to a, to a vehicle scale to a gas pump, just a tremendous variety of different devices and the costs vary widely as well. We look at 24,000 devices annually, well, excuse me, there's 24,000 devices that are in our database. Most of those are looked at annually. And I really have to compliment our staff in their ability to get through all of these devices. It really is quite a challenge. The program requirements for our overall Waits and Measures program itself are about $880,000 and we receive about $685,000 in program fees to the device industry and to offset the costs of the program itself. So I want to stress with regards to that that these numbers do not include reimbursement from the industry or the fees that we charge the industry. So if we were to consider the fees, the cost would drop down to around $13 to $14 per hour. Our other headline measure is percent of SFO shipments inspected with actionable pests, a rather obsequious title there and measure, but what we do is we go out to SFO, UPS, FedEx, and, and we have pest exclusion staff inspect agricultural shipments that are held aside and, or we use dogs actually to go in and to, to check for shipments that have agricultural commodities in them. And we inspect those. These are shipments from Florida, Hawaii, other states, other regions of California that potentially have pests that are state actionable, meaning they're on the state's list, they're regulated, is potentially presenting a risk to agriculture. We inspect all the shipments to make sure that they don't have those pests on them. So this measure is, in the past, we've used a similar measure, which has been the number of pests found annually on SFO shipments. And typically, that's 200 to 300 pests on about 10,000 shipments that we actually inspected SFO. So this is a critical pest prevention program, our pest exclusion program. The state provides some contract money in support of it and it is our first-line defense against the introduction of pests such as Mediterranean fruit fly, Oriental fruit fly, gypsy moth. Those are the real big ones. Other counties in California and other states are looking for light brown apple moth on shipments from San Mateo County because we're an infested county, one of the only ones in this, in the nation. So, so actually, our industry has to deal with that, but that's another story in itself. So, program results. Percent of licensed businesses in compliance with pesticide regulations. This is the first of two program measurements and we see that this has dipped recently and that largely has to do with we've gotten more involved in, in getting, looking at maintenance gardeners. Traditionally, we've been involved with the agricultural industry and the structural industry that does general pest control applications arounds homes or fumigations. But there's a whole nother aspect to it, which is the maintenance gardener industry. And many maintenance gardeners don't realize that Roundup is a pesticide. Many of them do not even realize that pesticides are regulated by the Agricultural Commissioner's Office. And we've been spending more time going out into the communities and doing surveillance and doing more inspections. And we've been finding that, well, as a result, our compliance is lower because many of these companies are not aware of the regulations pertaining to pesticide use. So I'll talk a little bit more about this later in our priorities in that we're going to be engaging the maintenance gardener community. We have some inroads there to provide some education and try to increase compliance. Program results. Percent of exotic insect quality control specimens recovered by pest detection staff. I apologize for the difficulty in understanding what this says. I'll try to, try to explain. We have our pest exclusion program at SFO and at points of entry to keep pests from coming in on agricultural shipments. As a backup to this program, but no less important is our pest detection program. We have 4,000 traps looking for these particular pests that we're also looking for at the point of entries throughout the, throughout the county, 4,000 traps. And we check those traps on a bi-weekly basis. There's over 50,000 inspections every year of those traps. And the state pays for that program. It's very critical. And so in order to ensure that our staff are properly trained and that we're doing our job, the state comes out here and they take the target pests that are dead with a clipped wing and they, and they put them, they salt our traps with them. And so to see if our staff are properly trained and if they're picking up the pest. And so it's, it's very serious stuff because we do not want to ever, ever miss a live pest and I certainly don't want the, the staff to ever miss a planted pest. So we take it very seriously and our goal is a 95% target, albeit we fall in short of that. It's very difficult. You get a Mc, what's called a McPhail trap, which is a glass trap that hangs in a tree. It's full of water, it's full of yeast, flies and bugs are attracted to it, they go in there. In some locations, that trap may have 1,000 bugs in it. And to be able to go through and sort that and look for Mediterranean fruit fly and those sorts of things takes a lot of time and a really good eye, so it's challenging. But that is one of our program measures and we endeavor to get every one of those pests. Our budget summary, comparing 1314 to 1415, our total sources, you see that they, they actually dropped by $450 there. This is a correction. We actually don't anticipate that our sources are going to be $450 less from this year, but when we put the numbers in about 18 months ago, we found that there was an error in there and so there's a correction recognized there. Our total requirements increased by about $163,000 and that's, doesn't, doesn't recognize any, or that does not mean that there's any changes to our programs. What that is, those are the figures that were given to us by the county to recognize increases in the cost of doing business for our department. So the net county cost is $164,000 more in 1415 and that reflects those, those changes I just described. Our funded FTEs, we have about 30 employees, well, 29 there, almost. Those are our full-time employees, inspectors. We also employ 10 extra hire employees during the peak trapping season. And what that does is it provides us a little bit of fiscal nimbleness and some efficiencies and some cost savings. The total sources, that's largely made up of state subvention fees on the industry as well as state contracts. Many of those contracts are pest exclusion and pest prevention contracts, the money from USDA that's funneled to us through CDFA, the Department of Food and Agriculture. Total requirements, that's 90% of our salaries there. About 10% of our overall cost is operating, is an operational budget. And our net county costs, it's about 30%, which is actually pretty low. When you look at all the counties I've worked in, that's a pretty good number right there. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to respond to them when I get through this presentation. So highlights, full implementation of the daily program. The daily program is an element of our, our paperless office initiative, which was recognized last year as a, for, and received a Green Star Award. Thank you very much for that. And the full implementation of the daily program means that we are no longer concurrently running the old program. The daily program itself, we have, like I said, 16 programs that we implement full-time. We are required by the state to report on those programs on a monthly basis. And putting together monthly reports on all of our staff, all of our activities for all of those programs is a tremendous task. And we also do an annual report. And the daily program itself goes through and compiles that information and greatly simplifies the actual process of putting together those reports as well as, as just getting data up on to our efficiencies in our programs. The agricultural ombudsman, and as fresh as it gets, I want to thank you very much for your support on these programs. San Mateo County is an expensive place to do business and for our agricultural industry, small things like this can make a big difference. And I can tell you that they are very much appreciated by our agricultural community. The agricultural ombudsman has been very well-received, engaged in, over the past year, these, they have been engaged in 26 projects, 20, excuse me, 26 different operations, or operators in 30 projects. And the, the, the industry that they've been working with, I was, I was concerned that they just work with one particular aspect of our agricultural industry, but they've been working with, you know, range, livestock producers, have worked with floral people, they've been working with the nursery. They've been working with the vegetable growers and the, and other crop producers. So all the industries have been represented in their, their workload as well as different types of projects, whether it's ag water, domestic water, farm labor, housing, food safety, agricultural infrastructure. They're also working with Steve, or the Planning Department, excuse me, to, to look at streamlining the process, the permitting process that we have with our agricultural community as they apply for permits, both in planning and in the building department. So another highlight for this year is the interception of Oriental fruit fly. I was really pleased, well, actually, I guess the other highlight would be that we didn't find any more Oriental fruit flies. There's a good yuck factor picture on the top right there. That's typically the type of damage that these pests can do on fruit. And for Oriental fruit fly, I mean, this shows that our pest detection program is working. This pest has 250 various hosts on it and it ranges from everything from plums to peaches to cucumbers to peppers to tomatoes. And, and so it not only has a potential to impact our agricultural community, but our home gardener community as well. So it's the kind of pest that we really want to keep out of here. So fiscal year highlights, we implemented the new daily, or excuse me, the new device registration and billing program. Another one is, is a part of our paperless office initiative, our old program. You used to have to, it was separate from our, our daily operating program that we use for tracking compliance and businesses within our Waits and Measures community. And you used to have to pull it out every year when you're ready to do device registration and stand on one leg and put your arms up and turn that rabbit ears just right to get it to work. The new program incorporates the billing function into our regulatory and compliance tracking of the industry so it, you can print out and distribute a billing, just a billing just about any time. The new program is fast, accurate, and it is not clunky. So skipped another one here. Going back, fiscal year priorities, again, Waits and Measures equipment and facilities improvements. It's very important that we keep up with the needs and meet the needs of our community. And our Waits and Measures equipment, some of it is getting old and it's in need of replacement. We have our gas truck, which is, this thing does not, you can't really see it on the screen. The gas truck is a lower one there and that one essentially has just been timed out. It's, it's been depreciated and we've played, we've paid the replacement costs on it. And so that particular unit is, I'm ready to be replaced. I did not include pictures of it because there are small children in the crowd and we don't want to scare anybody. The, on the left side is a, is a dynamometer. We check taxi cabs and the industry itself has gone to a lot of front-wheel-drive vehicles. And our, the unit that we use right now is a, is above ground. And with front-wheel-drive vehicles, that can be problems. And so we're looking at replacing that with an in-ground unit. We're working with Public Works on finding the location for that, to place the in-ground unit so that we don't have something like this happen in our shop, somebody coming off the, off the rollers. On the top right there is a picture of our water bench. It's relatively small. It, it can accommodate six water meters that we're testing. We are required to test water meters before they're installed in apartment complexes or before they're installed in residential apartments where people are going to be paying for their water. There's been a tremendous growth in residential housing in the way of apartments and we are testing all of those meters. And more and more of our staff time has been going into testing those meters. And so in, 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 and a lot of frustration on the part of the industry, actually, because we've been finding a lot of high failure rates. So we want to expand our water meter bench so that we can get more efficiencies out of that, not spend as much time testing meters and keep our industry happy. So the, we will pay for those out of our fund balance and we've already set some funds, identified and set some funds aside in order to make the purchase of the dynamometer. So priorities, direct marketing program review. Direct marketing, the legislation that authorized direct marketing was passed back in the Direct marketing, the legislation that authorized direct marketing was passed back in the, um, late seventies. And it was originally passed to facilitate growers selling direct to, um, consumers. The regulation was more of a marketing regulation rather than enforcement regulation. There's a lot of, um, items that need clarification in that. Things like, um, practicing the agricultural arts, qualifications of a certified farmer's market operator, just what constitutes a farmer's market. And, um, we have a tremendous number of markets in our county. And, um, these questions routinely come up for our staff. And, um, right now legislation is pending. Dickinson's Bill AB eighteen seventy-one is intended to update the laws and the regulations and, and how farmers markets operate. So we're tracking that legislation. And, um, if it passes, we're gonna take a look to see how it addresses the issues that we have at the farmers markets. And, um, and if, if we still continue to have some issues with, with clarification, maybe working with the county manager and, and your board to look at ways that we might be able to, to address those. Another priority is our approach to succession planning and management. I really want to thank Human Resources for their help in developing and implementing a differential pay for staff possessing, um, licenses beyond what's required for their position. When I came, and that's especially important for commissioner sealers licenses and deputy agriculture and deputy sealers licenses. When I came on board, there was nobody but the deputy staff had advanced licenses. And, um, which I, I saw as an issue because in the time since I've come on board, we've, we've had two of three deputies retire. Um, and fortunately, um, staff have really responded to this program. And we now have six individuals that, um, are not deputies who have advanced licensing, either agriculture or, or weights and measures licensing, uh, and, or having both of them. And, and I, I can't tell you how much that helps around the department as well because it, it, it really is a significant, um, commitment on the part of the staff to get that licensing. It requires, um, written exams and oral exams at the state level. And if you have families, it's, it's a hard commitment to make. But staff have stepped up and it's improved our office efficiency and that these staff are capable of answering questions with the public and doing things around the office that your usual staff are not capable of doing. So thank you, Human Resources, and I'm looking forward to getting commissioners and sealers licenses. So we might look at somebody in-house who can eventually replace me. Priorities is outreach and education of pesticide user. This is our, almost our last one. And one of those is the maintenance gardeners issue that I spoke to earlier. And we're gonna be working with that industry to try to educate and to improve compliance with regards to pesticide use. It can be used safely and appropriately. Another one is that we, we, every year we do a, a training for, um, field workers and pesticide handlers in the agricultural community. And that has been fairly well attended in the past, but we've been seeing that the numbers have been dwindling on that. And so much of that is because the producers, the ag producers are providing that training themselves. But I also want to make sure that, that we cover that base. And so we'll be working with our agricultural community and our, and our ag community leaders to, um, make sure that field workers are properly trained to make sure that they can protect themselves concerning pesticides. The one priority slide I did not put in here, which was the as fresh as it gets program and the agricultural omsudsman. I want to make sure that we continue providing a high level of service, um, for our agricultural community and, um, educate the public concerning the importance of local agriculture on those programs. So that's the end of my presentation. Thank you for your time and attention. I'd be glad to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. Learned a lot. Um, questions?
Well, I don't have any questions. Just to make a quick comment, actually, I, I like these, uh, director's reports, cause you know, yours, you do have a small department and, you know, we might not, uh, think, uh, too much about what the department does. So it's really good to see all the activities. You really are important in terms of, for consumers, making sure that there's accuracy and integrity in the products that they're purchasing. But I saw, also want to commend you that, uh, you know, you and I both work a lot in the farm community, both the, all the agricultural producers, whether it's, uh, food or flowers. And I know that they really appreciate your department and especially appreciate your leadership. So thanks for your leadership.
Thank you.
Fred, can you talk a little bit about what the industry is doing in terms of pesticides? Are, I mean, is there movement to have safer, less, um, less poisonous kind of pesticides? And are we adapting to those in San Mateo County?
Yeah, the, um, I mean, pest, we, pesticide regulation is, is preempted by state law. There's a state law eleven five oh one point one. That essentially says a state has preemption on that. However, there's a whole registration process, both at the national level and the state level to ensure that materials are both effective and when used according to the label, they can be used safely. And, and then there's a whole, you know, guidelines as far as personal protective equipment that individuals, when applying those pesticides, need to use. The materials that are being used nowadays aren't anything like the good stuff in quotes that we used to see. And the toxicities are much lower, um, the residual activities are much lower and the, the environmental residues are much lower as well. And so that's just a general statement about pesticide regulation in California itself. The, the state is always looking at, um, you know, exposures and doing sampling, both air sampling, soil sampling, those sorts of things, and, and making adjustments to our, our pesticide regulatory framework in order to address those. The, you know, the banning of diazepam as just a general spray around residences. Okay. And, and I have to say eighty percent of the pesticides used, um, are residential. Only twenty percent or so is, is used in agriculture. And so the state makes adjustments as we, as, as we see things that are down there. Within our agricultural community itself, um, depending on the circumstances, Brussels sprouts, you know, one of things is really difficult to grow. But some of our growers in response to community concerns or just trying to bring greener have gone to, to, to low-impact, low-toxicity products because they found that they can indeed produce a crop using those products, even though it costs them more money in order to make those up, to, to purchase them. And so there are some adjustments being made within the industry. And if they can apply fewer chemicals, they will do so. And a lot of them are more relying on, on monitoring. It used to be you'd spr- you'd spray on schedule every two weeks, ten days, just routinely. But now what they're doing is they're relying on monitoring. They go out and they check for pests and they look at the crops to see if there's a need to even make an application. So in those are ways to incorporate efficiencies and also minimal, minimize our environmental impacts as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Welcome.
Right, uh, just, just one, you know, you do an amazing number of inspections. I mean, it must, all in, it's tens of thousands of inspections. So, uh, it's remarkable you can get that many inspections done. But how many violations do you come across, you know, and what happens when you find a violation?
Well, typically we, we start, it depends on what the particular violation is and what program and, and, and what types of impacts are, are potentially there. I mean, if it's something that concerns pesticide and there's actually an, uh, an environmental or, or potential safety, human health impacts, you know, we'll issue a cease and desist immediately and shut down whatever that activity is. We'll issue a notice of violation, um, which documents that the violation took place. And there's a cease and desist box on that. And then we also have the authority to issue civil penalties, up to five thousand dollars.
I was thinking particularly about all the devices that you have to measure. You know, the measuring devices, the weight and measure, the weight and measure compliance in particular.
Yeah.
You know, are, uh, are ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, these things are just fine? I, I don't have any sense of magnitude. Any, I don't have a sense for how often people.
That, that was our slide that we showed there. I wonder if I can get, actually get back to it. That was one of our first ones. Well, all right, no, that, I don't have a slide for that. Regarding weights and measures, we're, we're looking at having about ninety-two percent compliance within the industry. That has dropped. Typically, we've had ninety-six percent compliance or so. The issue has been water meters. These devices that are being used are certified by, um, the national, um, the National Weights and Measures Board as well as California-type approval programs. And so the, the, the devices themselves are, are made for what they're, um, for whatever purpose they're intended. They're supposed to meet certain requirements. And, um, and, and we test to make sure they're properly maintained, they're correct and they're accurate. When we find that, um, there are devices that, um, do not, are, are not properly maintained, we will red-tag the device if it is cheating the consumer. And that's essentially taking it out of service. If we go to a scale and we find that it is, um, you know, that it, the thirty-pound scale says it weighs, you know, an item weighs one point seven pounds, it's supposed to be a one-pound item, we will red-tag that scale and take it out of service. We'll issue a notice of non-compliance at the time. And then that's essentially a fix-it ticket. If they do it again, then we will, we'll hit them with civil penalties. And we can start relatively low when we have an escalating scale that if we don't get compliance, we can, um, go through and, and take a serious level of violation, which be up to a thousand dollars per device. And if that doesn't work, then we work with the district attorney's office. And sometimes if it's just something that's happening in one store, say, say a point of sales problem, you know, we'll, we can correct that at that one store. But if it's something that's happening at a corporate level, um, then it's something that needs to be addressed at a statewide level. And then we'll engage the district attorney's office and other counties as well.
You don't, uh, you don't check on bathroom scales, I guess?
What scales?
Bathroom scales.
Bathroom scales.
Those are always off in my house.
You know, actually, we do, we do check Weight Watcher scales because for a while Weight Watchers was charging by the weight you lost.
Oh, interesting.
And which is, it becomes a commercial device at that point. So we're actually going to Weight Watchers.
That would be very tricky of them. They did that.
But if, if you'd like us to check your ba- bathroom scale, you can bring it into our office. And we, and we have a, um, an inspection fee that we'll charge you, but we will check your scale.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind. All right. Again, thank you for the, for the presentation and, uh, giving us a sense for all that you do. So, uh, that would conclude our presentation. So our, our last item before we adjourn until this afternoon is board member reports. Do you want to start today, Mr. Logan?
Couple of news items and one, uh, adjournment. First of all, and you mentioned earlier President Pine, that you and I took a, uh, tour of the inland waterways in Redwood City last week in a little motorboat, motorboat. I was really worried about getting seasick, cause I get seasick really, just being on a dock can do it for me. Fortunately, I didn't get sick. Um, I loaded up on the medicine and everything worked out. But the important thing, I think, for me, that you just, the tour gave me a new perspective of the possibilities from an envi- environmental perspective and, um, some of these developments over on Main Street. We actually went the waterway behind, uh, the new building there on Main Street. And we almost went right up to, uh, the, the Redwood City School District Building, under the bridges. It was really incredible, but it gives you a whole different perspective of the inland waterways and the beauty of that area and the marshes and sort of what's going on. It was really an educational tour and wanted to thank, um, the folks who helped, uh, organize that, uh, for us. And I would just encourage you all, if you have, uh, the time, we were, we were out there for a couple hours, actually. If you have the time, it's really educational. It'll give you a totally different perspective on, um, on the inland waterways here. Yesterday, we had a press walking tour of Middlefield Road. And, um, I was a little, honestly, a little bit pessimistic, I guess, or negative. I, I really didn't think, you know, anybody was really that interested in coming out. And thanks to Marshall Wilson and Peggy and the outreach team, we had radio stations, TV, Spanish language, the newspapers. And they were all very, very interested in, uh, what the county was doing there. So a special shout out to, uh, Marshall Wilson for, for getting everybody there. It was just pretty incredible. Kevin Mullen and I, once again this year, are, uh, co-hosting the Connect fourteen event, which has to do with technology and social media. And this year it's gonna be, um, actually held at Facebook on September twenty-fourth. And the agenda is coming together and it's an awesome lineup of speakers. And one of the interesting things, uh, that we're really doing this year is we're gonna have a conversation about documenting what Wi-Fi networks exist in the county, whether from schools or county and if they're in parks or whatever. And we're hopefully gonna identify the gaps in that Wi-Fi countywide. And then we're gonna talk about what to do about those gaps. So pretty interesting conversation, um, on September twenty-fourth at Facebook. And finally, um, I'd like to ask that we, uh, adjourn in memory of Ira Ruskin. As you all know, I'm, you, you obviously all knew him, as I did. He was a Redwood City resident. Uh, he was a very unique man. He was compassionate. He was thoughtful. He did a lot to revitalize downtown Redwood City and what we see, uh, today. He often advocated for things that might have not been that popular at the time. I can recall he advocated for, uh, uh, re-entry programs for formerly incarcerated individuals, which back then wasn't, you know, that popular. And he worked with East Palo Alto and got some things done in that area. He would also, I learned at his, um, service, which was, uh, really, uh, a moving testament to his contributions, uh, that he actually got a law passed on, uh, tracking wildlife in corridors so that, uh, potential developments wouldn't, uh, stop or hinder, uh, wildlife from, from their migrations, which I thought was, uh, pretty amazing. But anyway, I, just a quick, uh, Ira story, I'm sure we all have them. But first time he was campaigning, we live in Redwood City up in Woodside Plaza area. And, uh, he was walking precincts. He was famous for walking precincts. And, uh, Maria, uh, my wife and I were out in the front yard doing some gardening. Well, I, I might have not really, really been doing gardening, but Maria certainly was. And this guy was walking down the sidewalk and he's got this package or pile of papers. And he starts talking to us. He starts talking to us about, hi, my name is Ira Ruskin and I'm running for blah blah. And one of my top priorities is education and kids in our community. And Maria and I had both known him for years and years and years. He didn't recognize us, cause he was in that precinct walk autopilot mode. And we said, Ira, stop, it's Maria and Warren. We know, we know who you are. And, uh, stopped with the spiel and he goes, oh my God, I'm, I'm so embarrassed. But, but anyway, uh, he was, uh, really a fine, fine human being. And he'll be missed and our thoughts obviously go to Cheryl and his family. And, uh, he'll be remembered in our thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to adjourn in memory of Mary Cohen. She passed away on July eighth in South San Francisco. She was born in San Francisco. She was a devoted wife to the late Patrick, William Patrick Cohen. And she was the, survived by her children, Eileen, William, Maureen, Martin, and John. She also has fifteen grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren. She attended John Muir and Gratton Grammar Schools, Everett High School, and was a, uh, graduated from Pol- Poly High in San Francisco in nineteen forty-seven. Uh, after she raised her family, she worked at the Sheridan School as their secretary for twenty-two years. She was a member of the Our Lady of Mercy Church Parish, a member of the Young at Heart Club for Our Lady of Mercy, the Dolger Senior Center, and a charter member of the Irish Cultural Center. She also volunteered at Filoli and ushered at Broadway by the Bay and Lucy Stern Theaters. She was very devoted to her family and she loved her garden. And our sympathies go out to the Cohen family.
Thank you. I'll just, uh, note that in addition, last week was a good week for field trips. So in addition to the inland waterway tour, I had a chance to visit the really impressive Kaiser Cancer Facility in South San Francisco, where they have just state-of-the-art radiation technology and this, uh, device called a Cyperknife, which, uh, uh, can pinpoint, you know, these radiation treatments at a sub-millimeter level. And just, I mean, it was right out of, uh, you know, right out of, uh, Star Trek. There, there's this machinery and the computers and the imaging and, you know, physicists on staff. And so it turns out that, um, it's, it's one of the most used, uh, you know, radiation centers in, 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 in the country. And, uh, they're really on the leading edge. So, uh, it was just interesting to see that.
I'd just like to remind everybody again, if it's too, not too late to register for the Tour de Peninsula Bike Ride on Sunday, August third, starting at Coyote Point Park.
I just, uh, a couple more things about Ira Ruskin is that I, I also had him walk precincts in my neighborhood. I remember the first time he walked a precinct, he actually lost that election, but he didn't give up and he came back. And a couple of years later, finally, he won. But he, uh, some of the things that I did not know about him, some things I did know about him, he was a lifelong Yankees fan. And I didn't, he actually grew up in, uh, New York City, moved to Miami as a teenager. But he loved Beethoven. He had a cat, Precious. That was his, uh, favorite little, little animal. He loved malt, a single malt Scotch. I did not know that he loved a good cigar. But the other thing about him, he, he, uh, he did go, after, when he graduated from high school, he came out west, cause he went to the University of California. And if, uh, those of us remember the free speech movement, he was really an integral part of that with, uh, the leader of, it was a guy named Mario Savio, had a great, uh, I guess, media personality. But Ira was, well, he was right there. He was, uh, he was one of those people that really, um, put his, put himself on the line for civil rights, um. You know, and I remember when he ran for, I guess- You know, and I remember when he ran for, I guess, is the Assembly against a guy named Poizner. Steve Poizner was a, not a bad guy, but Steve was a very wealthy tech person who put about $6 million into his campaign. Ira pulled it off, he won anyway. But I remember one of the debates, Ira was really, he was really a fine person with lots of integrity. And the other guy was, Steve was kind of saying, well, I've raised all my money personally. And why, you know, my, my opponent has, had to raise money from other people on labor unions, et cetera. And I remember Ira coming back and saying, well, just because I raised money from other people, doesn't mean that your money is more pure than mine. I thought he really slam dunked that guy, and he ended up winning the election. He was a, he, I know he, he was a great person for, with lots of integrity and compassion. Cared a lot about civil rights, women's rights, and environmental causes. And, you know, when he had this fatal illness, when he withdrew, he was going to run for the State Senate, then he withdrew from political life. And he went to Senate, and he said what he was going to do is spend more time with his wife Cheryl. And he, and he did do just that, and he was also going to write his memoir, so I'll be really anxious to see. Because I think he probably, fortunately, he got enough time, and I'm sure he probably finished it. He, and, and I know from the way he spoke and thought, that it will be a captivating memoir.
All right, thank you for everyone's reports. So we're going to adjourn, we convene at 1:30 for the Tottle land use matter. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the Samhain Towne County Board of Supervisors meeting. We are reconvening after meeting this morning. Today's, this afternoon's session is on one item, and of course, that's on the Tottle application for a childcare center at the corner of Alameda and Manzanita. I would say just a couple, a couple of things about the structure for the, for the hearing today. You know, first off, I really want to thank everyone for their emails and, and, and all the comments and documents that you've sent us. We received a lot of material, we've all taken a look at that, it's, it's been very helpful and was really, really well done. What we'll do today is we'll begin with a, a presentation by our, our planning department on the matter. Our planning director, Steve Monowitz, will take about 10 minutes to present the matter. After that, the appellants, the, the individuals who are opposed to the project, I'm going to allow Peter McDonald, who's going to speak really on behalf of the appellants, some extra time, up to 10 minutes, because he has a PowerPoint that he would like to present. Following that, the appellant, and Heather Hopkins, has a short PowerPoint, which I believe will be in the, in the order of six minutes. And then we will take testimony from anyone in, in the room who might like to speak for, for up to two minutes. So we, if you would like to speak, you'd want to submit one of these orange speaker cards, and you could leave them right up here with the, with the clerk, with Heather. And then we'll, we'll call, call you, and you would have up to, up to two minutes each. So, you know, we appreciate that there are strong views on this issue on both sides, and, you know, we're here to give everyone a chance to speak and make the best decision we can. So, Mr. Monowitz.
Thank you Chairman Pine, good afternoon to you, members of the board, Ms. Jensen, Ms. Fox, Mr. Byers. The item before you involves an appeal by 14 individuals of the Planning Commission's approval of a use permit to operate a daycare center in Incorporated West Menlo Park. Project is located on the northwest corner of Manzanita Avenue in Alameda de Las Pulgas in a residential community zoned R1 S72. Project consists of an innovative weekday daycare program that enables parents and caregivers to sign up for short-term daycare services using a computerized reservation system. The facility, which will employ two full-time staff members and one part-time staff, will be open between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, and will serve a maximum of 24 children between the ages of two and six at any one time. A number of conditions were attached to the use permit by the Planning Commission in order to address its potential impacts on the neighborhood, including a limitation on the number of pickup and drop-offs to no more than 40 in one day, and no more than 10 per hour, and no more than two in any 12-minute period. Parking for employees will be provided by two spaces within the garage. Will be provided by three spaces within the driveway and a new accessible parking space. This site plan shows the location of the parking spaces, as well as the minor exterior modifications proposed by the applicants, which include a new secondary entrance on the Manzanita Avenue side of the structure, replacement of a back deck with a new door and exit ramp, and paving and vegetation removal to accommodate the accessible parking space and the widening of the driveway so it can accommodate three vehicles. Here's a view of the existing residents from Alameda de Las Pulgas. A view of the residents from Manzanita Avenue. A view from the corner of Manzanita and Alameda de Las Pulgas. This slide shows the area where three drop-off spaces will be provided in the driveway. This slide shows three on-street parking spaces available along Alameda de Las Pulgas directly in front of the project site. And this last picture shows the location where the accessible parking space will be established. This slide provides a brief chronology of the events that have occurred. In January of this year, the department circulated an initial study mitigated negative declaration for a 20-day public review period. In February of this year, the Planning Commission considered the project and voted unanimously to approve it. And then on February 26th, we received the appeal challenging the Planning Commission's decision, accompanied by a petition opposing the project signed by 120 individuals. The major points of the appeal include traffic issues. The appellants assert that the project will have significant traffic impacts and question the accuracy of the traffic study, because it was conducted in July, when many residents were out of town. Staff's view is that because the study adjusted traffic counts upward by 18%, it appropriately accounted for seasonal fluctuations. The study found that the greatest number of trips generated by the project, which were estimated to be about 20 trips, 10 in and 10 out per hour, would occur between 12:00 PM and 3:00 PM outside of commute periods. And finally, the Department of Public Works reviewed the traffic study and concurred with the conclusion that the project would not have a significant impact on traffic. The next major point of the appeal has to do with parking. The appellants assert that the project will have significant impacts because the available, availability of on-street parking observed in July does not represent parking availability during the school year. Staff's feeling is that the provision of two onsite spaces for staff and four onsite spaces for drop-offs, combined with available on-street parking, will meet the needs of the project without adversely impacting the neighborhood. And we've attached conditions of approval that limit drop-offs and pickups in order to minimize parking impacts. The third major point of the appeal has to do with noise. The appellants assert that the project will violate the county's noise ordinance. Staff's response is that no more than 12 children will play outdoors at any one time. Outdoor activities will occur during the standard workday and will be limited to two 30-minute sessions in the morning and one 45-minute session in the afternoon. Based on a comparison to measured noise levels generated by 30 students at University Heights Montessori School, we believe that the noise generated by 12 children is expected to comply with the county's noise regulations. And finally, landscaping will be installed along the perimeter of the outdoor play area in order to provide a noise buffer. The final major point of the appeal has to do with land use. The appellants state that the conversion of the property from a residence to a commercial use will adversely impact the character of the neighborhood. Staff's response is that preschools are allowed within the R1 zoning district, subject to a use permit, and represent a type of use that can be expected to occur within a residential neighborhood. The project will provide for early childhood learning and development, and thereby provide a needed and valuable service to the community. And finally, the minimal extent of modifications to the structure will retain its visual compatibility with the neighborhood. Staff therefore recommends that the Board of Supervisors deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Planning Commission to certify the initial study mitigated negative declaration and to approve the use permit based on the findings contained in Attachment A of the staff report. Before I conclude my presentation, I would like to point out a recommended change to condition number four of the use permit. It's come to our attention that before the state can issue the required childcare license, that the necessary improvements need to be completed to the structure. So rather than requiring the state license be submitted before we issue the building permit, which would create a catch-22 situation, we're recommending that we replace the condition as, to read as follows. Prior to opening for business, the applicant shall obtain the required childcare license from the state of California and submit a copy to the Planning and Building Department. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Monowitz. Any, any questions, Mr. Monowitz, at this time? Okay, so, yes, Supervisor Groom.
How much time is spent indoor and outdoor, or is this arbitrary?
I'm not aware of any, but I believe the applicants should be prepared to address that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I can ask Peter McDonald to go ahead and make his presentation, and I set that for, for 10 minutes. Again, if folks have speaker cards, you can go ahead and bring those up.
Could you go back to the first slide? That's the last one. Sure. You want me to do it from here? First of all, thank you, members of the board, for allowing us to discuss this matter with you. We appreciate your, your hearing of your points, and know that this is an important decision for the community and for you. I wanted to point out that I'll be expressing a number of opinions here in these slides and verbally to you. And both those opinions, as well as the material in this deck, is not just that of my own opinion, but rather those from many of the members of the community, the neighborhood that's being impacted here. We do in fact believe that the approval and establishment of Tottle, a commercial daycare center in our neighborhood would have a significant injurious effect on the neighborhood, and would like to explain in more detail why we think that's the case. To do that, we'd like to first provide some more details and descriptions about what our neighborhood is like, and then talk about the impact we think the Tottle will have on the neighborhood itself. As the Planning Commission mentioned, the proposed site is at the corner of Manzanita and Alameda. So we'd like to talk about what is Manzanita like, what is Barney like, another area that we think will be impacted, to give you an understanding of the area right there. We have a very strong sense of a residential community. We have regular block party meetings, the neighbors all know each other, the kids play together. 10 out of the 14 families on that one block in Manzanita alone, between Alameda and Barney, have children. There are 20 children 14 years old and younger on that one block. Never mind the countless more young children that live and go to school on Barney, walking and biking to school every day. Nine out of the 14 houses in that one block in Manzanita have people who are there during normal working hours. And there's 100% alignment of the people who live on Manzanita as well as Barney, that they do not want Tottle to be established in the proposed location. We have, and we thought it was 140 signatures, opposing the decision, whether it's 140, 120, there are clearly a lot from a very small area that we're talking about here. So the neighborhood really is pretty much united in opposition to this proposal. Now, as parents of young children, and I have three, we are very much in favor of daycare facilities. I think the question before the board is what is the appropriate nature of a daycare facility to be approved in a residential neighborhood? We approve of in-home daycare, certainly. We are opposed to the establishment of a commercial daycare, particularly one that we believe drives a high volume of pickups and traffic that will come in down to our quiet streets as a result. We'll talk about that in more detail. Just provide some more background, here's a picture of Manzanita. Manzanita is a safe but narrow street, there are no sidewalks on Manzanita. And as a result, the children are often playing out in the street or walking in the street, and oftentimes, you know, biking to school or whatever in the street itself. That's not conducive to vehicular traffic. In addition to that, as a result, it's hard to park on the street itself other than designated parking spaces, as the amount of space is limited as far as the width goes. If you want to look at Barney, and we'll show a map, a little bit of Barney, and why we think Barney is going to be significantly impacted. The board made a decision a number of years ago to close off Barney to vehicular traffic at the intersection of Camino Alago and Barney. That was to establish a pedestrian and bike thoroughfare to connect Los Amitas. In the area here, you'll see that's the kindergarten playground at Los Amitas, on the other side of Camino Alago, to create a thoroughfare for people from our part of University Heights to get to and from school throughout the day. And here's a picture of that happening here. Again, a lot of biking activity, a lot of walking, and in fact Barney is a street where a lot of the kids play. I've had all three of my children learn how to bike on that street, that's what we do. The other important point to note is that this is just not something that happens in the beginning of the morning, at the start of a school time, or late in the afternoon. The Planning Commission talked about its peak periods of traffic and how that wouldn't coincide with the commute, but that's not regarding what happens to school commute. If you look at the start and stop times of Los Amitas, you'll find that they happen and are started throughout the morning and the afternoon. There are always kids going to and from Los Amitas School along Barney, including our children. In addition to that, there are after-school activities that happen that drive traffic down that street well until 5 o'clock in the afternoon. So let's look at the neighborhood from a different perspective. This is a picture of the corner of Manzanita and Alameda de Las Pulgas. With the exception of the Country Corner Store, which predates almost all the houses in University Heights, there is not another commercial operation in that part of University Heights. This would be the only commercial entity operating within a sea of homes. And, and most of those homes have young children. Now, the Planning Commission cited prior approval by the board of University Heights Montessori as a comparable precedent for Tottle. And I had two children who went to University Heights Montessori, so it's worth looking at. Is that representative and a fair comparable for Tottle? So this is a picture of where Tottle will be located, and this is a picture of University Heights Montessori. While it is designated as a residential zone, it's in back of the parking lot to the Dutch Goose, adjusts the major commercial part of Alameda, which is nine or 10 blocks away from where the proposed site of Tottle is, and is on AV as well, which is the major thoroughfare connecting this commercial part of Alameda to Santa Cruz and downtown Menlo Park. Tottle, in our location, is nothing like University Heights Montessori. So let's pause now and talk about what do we think the impact would be in our neighborhood? And here's a map pointing out the area with street names. Alameda is, of course, a very busy street, I know because I live on it. To think that people are going to prefer or want to park on Alameda and get out in the middle of that busy street to take out their two- to six-year-olds, and then bring them into Tottle versus turning onto Manzanita, I think would be a significant mistake in judgment. Parents will turn onto Manzanita and look to park in the driveway, and if they don't find the parking there, find the parking there, they will go ahead and park on the street, even if they're not told to do so. When they then go to talk about how to, they may need to decide how to get back to where they want to go to, because this is a convenience service for people needing to do their different errands or work at home or whatever during the day, they will then continue down Manzanita. They don't, turning back, pulling a U-turn, or a K-turn, or a three-point turn on Manzanita to get back to Alameda, and turning onto Manzanita with the traffic is very much of a challenge. They will continue down Manzanita and then turn onto Barney. The only four-way stoplight on Alameda in that part of the area is the corner of Val Perezo in Alameda, and that's where they will go to to get back to Menlo Park or Palo Alto, or most of the places where they're going. I'd also note that located here are, there are two other preschools nearby. There's a preschool at Los Amitas, which currently has openings for children, and there is an in-home daycare for up to 12 kids at Circle of Friends, only a block away, which we understand also has openings for daycare.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question there?
Sure.
Can we go back to that map? Are those the only two daycare centers in that area, the ones you have marked on this map?
No, there are at least two more. There's University Heights Montessori, which is at the corner of AV and Alameda, and then there's, at the Bethany Church, there's Little Angeles as well. There may be others too, but those are the ones that I know of in University Heights.
Thank you.
There's more? Okay, other folks can comment on this more as well. Here's a picture of Manzanita, again, narrow street, no sidewalks, hard to make a K-turn and get back out to Alameda, hard to make a three-point turn. That traffic will funnel down Manzanita onto Barney. So to summarize some of the points why we oppose TOTL, TOTL is not an in-home daycare facility. We would welcome such a facility in our neighborhood. It converts a house by knocking down walls, installing rows of children's toilets, into a high-volume commercial operation that will drive up to 80 drop-offs and pickups each day, Monday through Friday, in our neighborhood. That will increase traffic, exacerbate parking, and cause challenges with neighborhood relations in our area. Again, we all oppose the establishment of this. It will change our neighborhood, Manzanita and Barney, from a pedestrian and bike-friendly street into a motorized vehicle-first street, which goes against the decision of the Board back a number of years ago to change Barney particularly into pedestrian and bike-friendly street for children to get to school. I think the Board needs to decide whether the need for the short-term daycare facility, and on such a scale, is worth the trade-offs for the impact to the neighborhood. It needs to weigh the impact of what will be a service to up to 40 children, to the 20 kids who live on Manzanita alone, that one block of Manzanita, never mind the rest of the children who live on Barney and get to and fro school on Barney every day. We think that the childcare needs can be better addressed through other means. If it's a commercial daycare facility that needs to be established, that should be established in or right next to a commercial area, not in the middle of a residential neighborhood area. We would welcome an in-home daycare facility at the TOTL proposed site or anywhere else in our neighborhood. In some ways, this decision is similar to, we think, BASE, the Bay Area Kitting Enterprise. Once that decision is made, it's hard to reverse it and hard to impact the impact on the neighborhood that comes from it. Lastly, in my 15 seconds left, while other folks will go into it in more detail, should the Board approve TOTL, which, again, we would oppose, there are a number of mitigation factors we would like to have included, including limiting the number of children to more than 12 at a time.
You can take another 30 seconds or so. We interrupted you with the question.
Thank you. So the first and most important is, of course, the nature of this facility being commercial, large number of children, drives significant parking and traffic. We think that limiting the number of children at the facility from 24 to 12 at a time, which is consistent with in-home daycare, would help mitigate the impact of the neighborhood. We would like the use permit to be for one year with renewal thereafter, to determine what the impact is. And the last point that I'll flag here at the bottom is, once the TOTL would cease operations, we will want the use permit as a daycare facility to be revoked, for that home to return to being a home, and for the physical changes to the house to be reverted back to being a house, so we can once again have a purely residential community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. That was, covered a lot of ground. Our next speaker will be Heather Hopkins for the appellant. And... I'm sorry, Heather Hopkins, of course, with the applicant.
Good afternoon. We're so excited to finally be here and to have the opportunity to propose a much-needed childcare service to local families. When we started down this path two and a half years ago, we knew from experience how important flexible childcare was, and is, and we were greatly encouraged by the hundreds of families who have reached out to us since then to let us know that they agree that our community needs a service like this. Although TOTL is a small childcare center for 24 children, childcare centers in Menlo Park tend to average around 60 children, so this is not a large facility. Its benefit will ripple through a much wider community of part and full-time working families, as well as work-at-home parents and community volunteers like these, who all wrote emails to you in support. TOTL will also provide funding and volunteer support to local children's charities. We're so proud to live in a county in which our leaders have so actively promoted early childhood education, and we're so thrilled to have the support of over 350 San Mateo County constituents, including many families in TOTL's immediate neighborhood, roughly 10% of those. We're also thrilled to have the support of members of the Menlo Park City Council and Planning Commission, support of the leadership of the Childcare Partnership and Childcare Coordinating Councils, and the entire Planning Commission through their unanimous vote. TOTL is dedicated to providing a high-quality early childhood education program led by teachers trained to uphold the highest licensing standards. You may hear some comments today around questions about child-to-teacher ratios and things of that sort, but should just know that we are very, very, understand child licensing standards and will operate a very high-quality facility. Due to our staggered arrival and departure schedule, we'll operate at full capacity at 24 children for only about an hour a day, and you'll see that peak. On average, we expect around 11 children per hour, with a teacher-to-child ratio of 1 to 7. The county's childcare shortage is due in great part to a scarcity of usable space. Despite the appellant's comments, most commercial properties, including those just down the street from TOTL, which I think will be suggested today from opponents, are not suited to childcare, given their lack of state-required outdoor play space. We looked at them all, among other reasons. We searched for over a year and a half for this facility, following hours and hours of conversation with land use planners. Since residentially-based care is so common, these are just four of the many in our nearby community, and most, three of these four are on extremely quiet residential streets, as opposed to University Heights Montessori, which is adjacent to a commercial property. We were so thrilled to find this cute little house on a convenient street corner in a neighborhood filled with young families who will walk, bike, and stroller around town, including to TOTL. I know there have been some questions about our reservation system, so I just wanted to tell you a little bit about that. The flow of families to and from TOTL will be regulated with the help of a reservation system, and the system is used by over 25,000 child-centered businesses around the country. This system will clock families in and out electronically. You can see the little sign mechanism up at the top there, and it will allow us to easily identify exactly when people come and go, whether they're early or late, and tweak anything needed to make sure our arrival and departure schedule is not causing issues. We will schedule pickups and drop-offs in 15-minute increments. Parents will be incentivized to arrive on time, because the billing clock will start at the child's pre-reserved time, and late pickups will be charged by the minute. If you're going to use TOTL, forgive me, we won't allow drop-ins without a reservation. The 15-minute arrival and departure window will allow for almost triple the average preschool drop-off time of 5.6 minutes, which has been studied and put forward by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. In addition, as part of our admissions process, which is mandated by the state, we'll collect license plate information for each TOTL family. Should a neighbor have any concern, we'll be able to easily identify the client and follow up to discuss solutions. There was a question about the outdoor, Supervisor Groom mandated outdoor time. There is no specific or lower level of mandated outdoor time for a childcare, only that you do provide outdoor time. We'd like to give Adam Dankberg from Kimley Horn &amp; Associates the remainder of our time.
All right. Thank you. My name is Adam Dankberg. I'm a traffic engineer with Kimley Horn &amp; Associates. We prepared, we prepared...
You have, you can take up to five minutes.
Okay, thank you. I won't need that amount of time. We prepared the traffic and parking analysis for this project, so I've performed a good deal of analysis on the effects of this project, and I'll highlight a couple of the areas that we covered. So on the traffic analysis, one thing I want to note is, TOTL will only generate, I think, somewhere in the order of 164 trips a day, or 20 in the peak hour. Typically, the city of San Mateo has a standard of 100 peak-hour trips, would require a traffic study, anything over 100 peak-hour trips. This project only generates 20, so it's, in most cases, this would not even require a traffic study to look at the effects of this project, but we did one anyways to look at the effects on the community. The findings of the analysis is basically that there is no significant impact. We looked at the intersection of Alameda de los Polgus and Manzanita. The project would not generate a significant impact location, and the turning movements from Manzanita to Alameda de los Polgus would operate an acceptable level of service. Then we did a very detailed parking analysis, really looking at the loading and offloading vehicles at the site and the effect on parking. At our recommendation, the project will provide a third space in the driveway to really facilitate variability in arrivals and pickups and drop-offs at the site. As was noted earlier, there's basically two scheduled pickups or drop-offs within 12 minutes, and as was noted, the average pickup-dropoff time is five to six minutes, as was measured by the Institute of Traffic Engineers. So we're really allowing a lot of buffer as far as variability in the pickup and drop-off times, and providing more spaces than are anticipated to be needed. And so we did an analysis of potential variability in pickups and drop-offs, because it's possible that some would arrive early or late, and so we did this Poissons distribution, looking at a normal curve of arrivals and variability, and found that basically less than 5% of the time would there be a need for more than three parking spaces. And so that would be only in the rare circumstances where you have multiple folks not arriving in their pickup window. So the only reason there would be circling through the neighborhood streets is if there isn't enough parking spaces. And so basically, we were showing that, you know, at most, 10 vehicles per day, likely much, much less than that, would need to circle through the neighborhood, because they would be unable to find a spot in the driveway. You know, as long as folks are reasonably on time in the pickups and drop-offs, there should not be any need to circle through the neighborhood. So one thing I want to highlight is, our analysis is extremely conservative in a number of respects. So one is, we assumed every single child would be dropped off individually and via car, so every single parent would bring one child and drive there and then leave without one child. So we're not assuming that multiple children arrive in one car, or that anybody walks or bikes, which in reality would likely occur. We assumed a 10-minute pickup or drop-off time. As I mentioned, the standard is five to six minutes, so we were very conservative by assuming a greater amount of time for pickups and drop-offs. We didn't account for the trips generated by the existing single-family house in our traffic analysis. And then, one matter that will be discussed, I would imagine, by the appellant is the, when their accounts were conducted. We conducted our accounts in July, due to the timing of the application. We did adjust those counts upwards by 18% to account for school traffic, using other counts in the area that were conducted during school season. There was some comment that that distance of the counts that we used for adjustment was all far away, so the county provided additional data during school season, just a couple blocks away, that showed that really the traffic would only increase by about 6% in that area due to school traffic. So our accounts were in the summer, we raised it 18%, but in reality, a 6% adjustment was probably all those necessary. So we took a very conservative assessment, really, of conditions during school season. And again, we analyzed the worst-case day, where they had the maximum number of pickups and drop-offs of 40, maximum capacity of the facility. On days where it doesn't reach the maximum capacity, there would be less effect on the roadway network. So I think all these kind of compound together to lead to a very conservative analysis, and we basically found that, you know, predominantly, there should be sufficient parking on-site. The vehicles would not have to circle around, and that there would be not, there would not be a traffic impact associated with the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. So are there any questions from the Board of any of the speakers before we go to public comment, or go ahead to public comment? All right, so we have about 30 or so speaker cards, and again, each person, oh, we got more than 30. Maybe 40. So again, we can allocate up to two minutes for each speaker, but you don't have to take the whole time. If you've heard a comment made before, keep that in mind, but we do welcome your input. So let's just jump right into it. I'm going to start with Sarah Moss, followed by Elaine McDonald.
Hi, I'm Sarah Moss, and I'm speaking in favor of TOTL. There's nothing else like it in town. Years ago, we frequented Brilliant Babies, whose business model is the same as TOTL's, but it unfortunately closed in 2012. The reservation system worked very well there, and families arrived in a staggered way, even without the conditions on arrivals and departures the county is asking TOTL to adhere to. I'm very excited for the opportunity, about the opportunity to use TOTL in the future, and hope you will uphold this permit.
Thank you. So we next have Elaine McDonald, and following that, following Elaine, Ashley Riley.
Thank you, Honorable Supervisors, for giving me time to speak with you. My name is Elaine McDonald. I'm the mother of three children and an active community member, local community member, as co-president of our school foundation, as well as an active community member at large, as an executive director of a nonprofit that serves San Mateo County. I ask the Board of Supervisors to please keep in mind the original intent of the creation by the Planning Commission of separate residential and separate commercial zones. Residential areas are safe places for families to live in without needing to worry about commercial traffic through affairs, and commercial zones are wonderful concentration, concentrated areas for shopping, retail, restaurants, and places for people to easily navigate to conduct their day-to-day affairs. I nor my neighbors are opposed to the concept of TOTL. Please understand that the concept and the idea of TOTL, and I know you will hear many people speaking and have heard from many emails, that the idea of TOTL is a wonderful idea, but the issue at hand is not whether or not TOTL is a good institution to operate, but whether this is the appropriate location, and whether there is a critical need for a commercial daycare to operate in this specific residential zone. As mentioned in an earlier presentation, there will be a negative impact to the residential nature of the neighborhood by allowing a commercial-use operation here, when half a mile away, there is a commercial district, Starbucks, local restaurants, post offices, exercise facilities, milk offices, nail salons, et cetera. This is where this operation belongs, and in fact, there are two preschools operating in that neighborhood flourishing, as evidence and proving that this is the location, an appropriate location, for a daycare facility. Therefore, I ask, why should the county planning need to grant a commercial-use permit exception within a residential neighborhood, altering the neighborhood character, affecting the lives not only of the families living there, but of all the students that need to walk down this area to get to school, when TOTL can operate very successfully in a bona fide or adjacent to a commercial zone? Thank you.
Thank you. And Ashley Riley, followed by Eric Jester.
Hi, my name is Ashley Riley, and I'm here to express my very strong support for TOTL. As the mom of four kids living in Menlo Park and the founder and executive director of the Fit Kids Foundation, which provides youth fitness and nutrition programs to underserved children, I can absolutely say that this service would be a huge benefit to the community. Many of my foundation's volunteers and supporters would benefit from TOTL's services, which would in turn benefit the inner privileged children reserved with increased volunteerism and awareness and funding. I'm very excited about TOTL's community-focused model and hope it will serve as an example for other local businesses. Having worked closely with both of TOTL's owners and several community organizations, I can say with absolute confidence that if anyone can run a tight ship, it's Heather and Amy. I have no doubt they will run a carefully monitored business that will be treasured by the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Jester, followed by Elena Chain.
Thank you for the time. I just wanted to make three quick points. I think most of the bigger points have been covered, but I just want to reiterate a couple of things. First off, as a parent living in the neighborhood, I live next door to the proposed development site, and as a working parent, I do appreciate the value that all daycare options bring to the community. Gone through the process of finding and selecting the right care for our child, and I know... our child, and I know, have a good sense of the amount of capacity that's out there, and the value that all daycare centers bring. So I do appreciate that. I don't think anyone here is going to dispute the value that Tottle would bring to the community. Again, the issue was, what's the appropriate size of such a facility within our community? So as a resident of the neighborhood, I can speak to that, that we have seen successful operations of more family-based daycare, and even if it wasn't a home-based daycare in the strictest sense of the word, but a smaller daycare in that size, roughly 12 kids, we've seen that work, and we would be thrilled to have that in our neighborhood. We just don't see the reason to make such an extreme jump from the typical regulations all the way to the largest possible zoning operation with 24 kids. And knowing how hard it is to work backwards from that, we'd ask that we start at a more reasonable, more typical 12 children number. And if it's successful, we can revisit and work up from there, knowing that it's much harder to work backwards. Then just two quick points. One, I mentioned that the, we talked about traffic, or the traffic engineer was kind enough to talk about traffic a bit, and I don't think anyone is disputing the measurements on Alameda. Again, the issue was to what degree we took into account the impact on Manzanita and Barney, much smaller thoroughfares, much more walkability, much more risk to anything happening. And again, the comment of, is there, if there is parking in the driveway, then there would be no reason to cut through the neighborhood? That kind of speaks to not understanding the dynamics of that intersection. Parking is, has, is one small factor. People are still not going to come out there and try and make that turn on the Alameda. They will cut through. Thanks.
Thank you. We have Elena Chase, if I'm pronouncing that right, and followed by Kathy Schondorf.
Hi, my name is Lena Chain, and I'm here to support Tottle. I have three children, and for several years, they attended three different schools. My youngest attended preschool close by to the proposed Tottle location, and I would have loved the opportunity to have a place for her to go with the other children for a few more hours a week. This would have alleviated her being shuttled around to the other older kids' schools and afternoon activities. I also work at my children's school in outreach and admissions. And in my position, I hear from other families that struggle with childcare options for their preschool-aged children. The existing programs just don't offer the flexibility they need to meet their needs. Tottle fills this gap, and I hope you consider this and grant them the permit to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Schondorf, followed by Carol Thompson.
Hello, Supervisors. Thank you for hearing us today. My name is Kathy Schondorf. I live across from the proposed development. I'm a longtime resident of the neighborhood. I've enjoyed it very much. I had an elderly father that was able to stay with me at, in my home. I love the influx of the new families. I think it's fabulous. I was in some of those pictures of the block parties that we have. We have get-togethers with the, with the new residents. It's a fabulous setup. And we have kids that play on the street, and a lot of the walking traffic, which has increased over the years that I've been there. I really want to, want to focus on the traffic, because there are kids on those streets all the time. And no matter how it's set up, those cars are going to be coming down Manzanita and going along Barney. And I think that's going, going to really affect the kids that are on the street. And there, it's not only kids, it's seniors with walking dogs, and, you know, not currently, but I've seen ladies with walkers that, you know, want to get out and enjoy the neighborhood. So I urge you to not approve this project, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Carol Thompson, followed by Danielle Critchley.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Carol Thompson, and I'm an early childhood educator for over 25 years. I'm also a county resident of 17 years, and I support Tottle's permit, and I hope you will too. I would like to speak from personal experience to the difficulty of finding appropriate facilities for high-quality early childhood education. For the last three and a half years, I've been working to open my own early childhood education program, all five. So far, I have not been successful, primarily because of the lack of local properties with the state mandated and very appropriate and needed large outdoor space for children and families, especially for those particularly that I hope to serve. Tottle was very fortunate to find a property well-suited to high-quality early childhood education. The owners consulted at length with land use permits, with land use experts, in order to know what to look for. I hope you will recognize, as did the Planning Commission, that any minor impacts to the community, or the immediate neighbors, will be far outweighed by, by the benefits of Tottle. If, as a county, we truly support increasing opportunities for early childhood education, we need to support operators who have thoughtfully overcome the many hurdles that are present in this process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Danielle Critchley, followed by Emily Robinson.
Hi, I'm both a mother and a resident of Manzanita. And I'm, like everyone here, we're not against daycare. We're all for it. Our concern is the scale, the size, and the nature of this particular proposal. Manzanita is a small, narrow street without sidewalks, as you've heard. And we walk on it. Like, there's no other place to walk but on the middle of the street. You're walking, the kids walking to school, bike riding, scooter riding, riding their dogs. You're in the middle of the street. So where I'm nervous is, how do I communicate to this consistently changing group of people? There's, as you heard the traffic fellow say, there's 164 trips a day. How do I communicate to those 164 trips that are most likely going to flow down Manzanita, the importance of driving carefully and slowly and cautiously, because I can't tell the kids to move onto the sidewalk? We don't have one. I can't tell the cars not to park on the shoulder so the kids can be on the shoulder, because if they do, it becomes a one-lane street. So that's, I don't, that makes me very nervous, and it scares me. So that's why I'm here today. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Again, Emily Robinson, followed by Kayan Dai.
Hi, I'm Emily Moberg Robinson. I'm a mom and an entrepreneur. I've got my three kids here in the back. I've been running my own business for the last year and a half, and I think my three children sitting there on their phones kind of shows why I'm so supportive of Tottle and flexible childcare. I'm a freelance editor. I have unpredictable hours when I get jobs, and I work when I don't get jobs, and I can stay home and watch my three-year-old. Flexible childcare like Tottle would enable me to take more jobs and help me ensure that my business actually will succeed. I know my daughter would enjoy being at Tottle way more than sitting at home with me, watching me on my computer, editing away. In fact, that's exactly what she did last month, when my babysitter had a last-minute family emergency, and Elsa from Frozen provided 15 hours of childcare for my, my three-year-old. This is exactly why I need something like Tottle. My work time is very limited. I work in, you know, very discreet chunks of time. I need something where I can drop off my children. Very limited time. I drop them off, I kiss them goodbye, and then I am on my way. Most other parents that I know who are working are doing the same thing. We're all very busy. I believe, I really believe that Tottle will be a very well-run service. I've known Heather for years. And I think that not only is it going to benefit the community at large, but I really genuinely believe it will actually benefit the neighborhood where it's situated. I think people will use it, and I encourage you to support their application. Thanks.
Thank you. Kayan Dai, followed by Ken Cornberg.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to talk. I'd like to point a few points. I don't know if I can be given a little bit longer time. If, okay, here is, the thing is-
If you could try to keep within two minutes.
I try, okay. So California Education Code has said, for, for school day, it has to be minimal 180 minutes, which is three hours. Tottle only target to one, to two hours, particular, in short-term notice. So this is not, will be a violation if we consider Tottle is a school in a residential zone, it will be a violation to the California Code. The second law, the employee parking was, was planned for two employee parking. But in their, in their, the staff report, he said, they will hire two full-time staff and one part-time staff. So they already planned three staff, but only two parking space planned. So this is contradicting each other. The third part, point I want to make is, this is a single-family zone, and to my knowledge, usually, one single family generate 10 trips per day. And if we allow this daycare to be operated at this location, it's going to generate 160 trips per day. 160 trips compared to 10 trips per day. I was told it's not a significant impact, but I think you see the number. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Ken Cornberg, followed by Michael Agnich.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I own the property adjacent to Bright Angel Montessori Academy, which is on Bay Road in Menlo Park. And two years ago, we heard the almost identical arguments about traffic mitigation problems, parking and noise, and safety. And I just want to give you a progress report. I sit at a desk across from that school. I have for the last two years, and I've been there for 18 years. And whatever difference they've made is imperceptible to me. And I find the arguments that there will be increase in traffic, I'm not aware of it. I'm not, this is qualitative, not quantitative. But I've heard no complaints from any of the other neighbors who were objecting to the project originally, and it's been considered a great success to the community. I lived for three years on Mills Avenue, two, three blocks down from where this Tottle is proposed, and I had three young daughters at that time. I would have loved to have this school available for many times, but we would have taken advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Agnich, followed by Stacia Wiesenthal.
Hi, I'm Mike Agnich. I'm a dad of two young girls. We actually live across the street from Hillview Middle School, so we're acutely aware of what it's like to live around a school. We're very strong supporters of Tottle. I'm not going to rehash a lot of what's said, but we do, I would like to say just a quick word. Knowing the owners, believe them to be very conscientious people of integrity, who are really dedicated to making Menlo Park one of the best places in the world to raise young kids. So we are very excited about Tottle, and look forward to, to being able to use it. Thanks.
Thank you. Stacia Wiesenthal, followed by Molly Drews. I'm sorry, do we, is Stacia here today? Okay. And if, Molly Drews.
Good afternoon. My name is Molly Drews, and I work from home. And I'm here to support Tottle, and to give you my perspective of somebody who lives next door to a preschool and loves it. My home shares a fence with University Heights Montessori on AV Avenue, which serves 60 children. And the school is housed in two little converted residence, much like Tottle would be. Although University Heights does not have any onsite parking, I've never had an issue with families parking in front of my driveway or disrupting me in any way. I also love hearing the children playing outside my window. They're never very loud. And I've become very good friends with the school's owners and most of the parents. I imagine Tottle would, will form similar relationships with its neighbors over time, and I hope you'll support its opening. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney Charney, followed by Robert Most.
Hi, thank you. My name is Courtney Charney, and I'm speaking in favor, strongly in favor of Tottle. I'm a realtor and also the parent of a three-year-old daughter. I've spent the past several years of my professional career helping young families settle into San Mateo County. I'm acutely aware of how few choices a parent has for childcare facilities in Menlo Park. There simply are not as many preschool or part-time daycare spots as the current population of children under the age of six require. In my opinion, as a realtor, I think having a childcare facility within walking distance increases the desirability of that area. More and more buyers indicate that they want to be able to ride, ride their bikes or walk to parks, shopping, restaurants, and schools. In considering your vote, please take a moment to seriously consider the current and long-term needs of San Mateo County and the families that love to take pride in living and thriving here within local businesses, local boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Most, followed by Laura Crane.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. My name is Robert Most, and I'm a local neighbor and live on the Alameda. Actually, I'd like to reiterate some of the points previously made, that, as you know, the concerns you hear today are typical of child permit hearings. And if you do an internet search of the minutes of city councils and boards like yourself, for the last 10 years, you'll find many instances of exactly what we're seeing here, in which neighbors cite parking, traffic, noise concerns, that sound exactly like this. If you, of course, continue your research, what actually happened, you also learn that the expensive noise and traffic studies that were commissioned by staff-recommended childcare projects rarely, if ever, identify significant negative impacts. And that these concerns all would disappear, like we've heard, once childcare center is up and running. This is certainly true for Menlo Park, for the residential-based centers in Menlo Park, none of which have had code violations cited against them in the last 20 years. And Tottle is basically the same thing. It's a residential building and residential neighborhood. So there's really no evidence of a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Crane, followed by Timmy Most.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm here to express my support in favor of Tottle. And like many people here, I'm a mother of three young children, and I know how helpful a flexible childcare solution would be to local families. But I really also wanted to talk about the broader benefits that Tottle would bring to our community. Menlo Park is a major source of funding and volunteerism for our area's nonprofit organizations, and Tottle will enhance our potential to serve these organizations. Tottle will not only provide families with flexibility to volunteer on their schedule, they are proactively reaching out to the community through their charitable program. This program will offer 1,000 hours of free childcare to volunteers, and at least 10% of their profits to local children's charities. Heather and Amy are extremely active community volunteers, so it's no surprise to me that their business would reflect this commitment. To provide a personal example of a community volunteer that would use Tottle, I actually volunteer at Lucille Packer Children's Hospital, Children's Health Council, My New Red Shoes, and Ronald McDonald House. While I don't spend time daily at these organizations, I do allocate at least 15 hours per month of my time, and I would love so much to have a place that I could count on for childcare without having to enroll my young son in another type of school or long-term agreement. A place like Tottle has been a long time coming, and I sincerely hope that you approve the opening of this business. Thank you.
Thank you. Timmy Most, followed by Norma Dillman.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Timmy Brock Most, and I live on the Alameda. I've raised three boys and successfully loaded and unloaded them on the Alameda. I'm right up the street from Tottle, and though I would not directly currently benefit from Tottle's services, I wanted to be here to support its permit because I believe Tottle's benefits would far outweigh its costs. I was here at the February public here- I was here at the February public hearing and thought, one of the commissioners made a really excellent point. He said something about the unrealistic expectations that one could find a hundred percent perfect location for a childcare. Instead, he suggested accepting this ninety-five percent perfect location, given the incredible need for childcare in our community. I'm in favor of looking at the big picture and granting a permit that would benefit the community at large. I believe any neighborhood concerns would melt away over time as fears are replaced with the comfort of knowing that toddle's owners are thoughtful, responsible, responsive, and respectful neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Normala Dillman followed by Emily Walling.
Um greetings Supervisor Pine and members of the board. I'm Normala Dillman. I'm the coordinator of the San Mateo County Childcare Partnership Council. And just wanting to give you, I think, what you already know, the the perspective that it's extremely difficult to find facilities for childcare centers in our county. It's um many providers that we have tried to help, spend years trying to find them and and often give up. Um so it's it's not an easy task. Um I've also um do needs assessment for the county as a whole. And we we have a gap uh for preschool childcare spaces of high quality in our county for families of all incomes. Um and this project, if if we look at the needs of families for flexible um care, where they're not needing to commit to full-time care and the cost of that, is it's it's like scarce is hen's teeth to find that sort of care. So the Partnership Council, just based on the tremendous need in our community, has a longstanding support position for new childcare centers if they are thoughtful and um are following um sensible uh traffic and noise mitigation measures, which this project definitely seems to be doing. I've also um observed many programs that have encountered similar and understandable um neighborhood concerns, but they haven't, they haven't borne out over the course of time in any of the instances in which I've been closely involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Emily Walling followed by Sarah Kinnahan.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Thank you for your time. Uh my name is Emily Walling, and I'm speaking in favor of toddle. I'm a working mother with two children, and I was thrilled to learn that toddle um was going to open a flexible daycare option in my neighborhood. The number of young families has been increasing every month in West Menlo Park. And a trustworthy, flexible, I want to underscore flexible, um local daycare option is something that parents in our neighborhoods sorely need and discuss all the time. I know from my presence at the February Planning Commission hearing that the owners of toddle have gone through great lengths to find a family-friendly community setting for toddle, where children have the ability to play outside. Um because the owners live nearby, they're also very sensitive to school drop-off traffic and parking and have taken that into consideration when planning their schedule, parking, and drop-off guidelines. Um I've been very impressed with their safe routes to school plan and their commitment to respecting the safety and well-being of the neighborhood. I personally would take great care and respect toddle circulation plan and the Safe Driver Pledge when I drop my children off at toddle. And I believe that other parents would be similarly responsible, just as we are every day when we drive around our neighborhood, dropping our children off at preschool um or just driving around our neighborhoods in general. Um I really encourage you to support toddle and approve its use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Kinnahan followed by Deborah Baker.
Hi, I'm Sarah Kinnahan, and I'm here as the Chair of the Facilities Committee for the Childcare Partnership Council for San Mateo County. And we are requesting that you grant the use permit based on what we know about the needs of families in our community, as well as the strategic direction that this board has set in terms of improving access to high-quality early learning. As the economy has improved, the county's seen a dramatic increase in the number of parents entering the labor force. Nearly three-quarters of parents in our county work and need some form of childcare. We need as many childcare and preschool options as possible, particularly flexible ones like toddle. In the Partnership Council's most recent needs assessment, we found that the county needs more than four thousand new preschool spaces to meet demand. And to do this, we need to find facilities, especially if you're supporting initiatives like the Big Lift, which is focused on uh increasing access to preschool and early learning. As has been mentioned, many potential operators are discouraged and abandoned their plans to open new facilities in our in our county. Uh there's a huge challenge in finding available spaces suitable for early education. And uh we hope that the county can move towards taking steps to remove barriers to the development of new centers so that other operators do not face a multi-year process to open. Uh we're advocating that in addition to granting this permit, that the board take a look at the zoning codes and regulations uh to make them uh more clear and easy to navigate in terms of permitting childcare and preschool. And the Partnership Council members of it would be happy to assist with that in advisory capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Baker followed by Lisa Sweeney.
My name is Deborah Baker. I am the operator of Circle of Friends Preschool, um operating within three hundred feet of toddle. It's a large family daycare home that has been in operation for twenty-five years. Um we strive to meet quality standards. Um people who are familiar with early childhood education probably know the Eckers. Um one of my big concerns, other than it does say in the the county planning guidelines that there is supposed to be a three-hundred-foot zone between my business and another childcare business, that wasn't taken into account at the planning commission meetings, um is the the big impact that toddle's going to have on my business. Um I also, my other objection is the, other than the location of the the facility, is the capacity of the facility. It's going to have a major impact on my business that I've been running for twenty-five years. And my business has not been full over the last eighteen months. And neither has Champions, which is the preschool program at Los Alameda School, right on the other side. We've both had openings. This competition is probably going to cause us great concerns with our business. Um the other, the other thing that I'm very concerned about is the outdoor space on the facility. I think we saw on on the screen the um size of the inside space compared with the outside space in this, in this place. And according to the California Department of Social Services Licensing Regulations, um Title Twenty-two, it says that there should be seventy-five square feet per child of outdoor space. Now, if they only allow twelve children outside, that means they need nine hundred feet of outside space. And it's clearly, if you look at the diagrams, they don't have nine hundred feet. And especially if they start to put in buffer bushes against the fences to mitigate the noise from neighbors, that takes away from the outside space, space that is available. My last concern, may I give my last concern, please?
If you just take a few more seconds.
Yes, I'll make it very quickly, is the outside time for the children. In the Eckers book, which is the quality, it's the environmental childcare, no, excuse me, early childhood environmental childcare assessment. It says that children should be outside a substantial period of the day. And right now, they're saying that the children will be outside a total of one hour in the morning and maybe another forty-five minutes in the afternoon, but that will be divided up by groups. So half of the children will go out for fifteen minutes? The other half will go out for fifteen minutes? I'm not quite sure. Substantial part of the day, if you know your Eckers, means fifty percent of the day. We have a little tiny space for outside. We're saying a half an hour, you can go out. Okay, you get fifteen minutes, that's it. You know, run around this little space. Now you need to come inside. Thank you. I have copies of my points, if you'd like to have them.
Uh Lisa Sweeney followed by Kristen Anderson.
Thank you, Supervisors, for having us. My name is Lisa Sweeney, and I'm here to support toddle. Today is one of those days, an exact reason why I need a solution like toddle. I learned on Friday that my regular childcare provider had to go out of town for a family funeral this week and was left without any childcare. After trying to scramble to find options, I was left empty-handed and had to miss two days of work and bring all three of my children to this meeting. Well, I tried to sell it as a good lesson in civics. It was a little bit of a difficult sale. I live within walking distance of toddle, and when using it, would plan, when possible, to either walk or ride my bike. I know some neighbors are concerned with increased traffic, but I don't believe toddle will have as much of an impact on the neighborhood, and certainly not as much as a conservative traffic study suggests. On days when I would need to drive, for example, on ways, on days going to work, I could drop my son at toddle by car, but we would not be increasing traffic on Alameda de Las Polgas because this is my standard route to work as it is. I believe many of the people who live in the area who would use it are already going up and down Alameda for um on their way to Los Alamedas or other regular daily activities. Although change always creates consternation for people, I believe toddle will, like other neighborhood preschools, improve the sense of our community. Families who use toddle will form bonds with other parents and children in Menlo Park and Atherton. This goodwill and sense of community will spill over to our local schools, including Los Alamedas, just a few blocks away, and La Entraada, as well as other community groups. The more we know and interact with our neighbors, the stronger our local Menlo Park community will be. In fact, I think my kids, who are all here, have already begun benefiting from the community toddle will create if this permit is granted. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Kristen Anderson followed by Krista Merlino.
Good afternoon. I'm Kristen Anderson. I'm the Redwood City Childcare Planner, and I'm on the Facilities Committee of the County's Childcare Partnership Council. I encourage you to support the toddle use permit. There are no affordable, licensable facilities in ideal locations in this part of San Mateo, as far as many of us know. I have a list of at least a dozen potential preschool and childcare operators who have been looking for spaces for the last few years and have either given up or are running uh family childcare homes where they're limited to only twelve children. So potential preschool or childcare operators must work with every type of property, including residential properties, to try to create new facilities. Toddle's applicants have agreed to many conditions to address the many neighbor, the neighborhood impacts and have demonstrated significant willingness to work with the neighbors to ensure that this will be a good fit. I met Heather Hopkins almost two years ago when she was looking at a first property of the dozen or more that she um considered. It was on El Camino in Redwood City, near the Atherton border, a small office strip. Um it turned out the landlord would not lease to her, and an air quality study would be needed, which would take a long time because of its location on El Camino. I would have loved to have this facility in Redwood City. If you have suggestions on how we can engage people who seem to feel that there are plenty of other commercial facilities or uh facilities in other zones, um including realtors, local employers, and others, we would really appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh Kristen Merlino followed by Lori Perica, Perica.
Hello. My name is Kristen Merlino, and I'm in favor of supporting the toddle permit. I have two children, and I work full-time from home. I've also been a West Menlo Park resident for twenty years. My in-laws have lived in the neighborhood affected for since nineteen sixty-five. I've watched the neighborhood change over many years. I live four blocks from the proposed location on the corner of Cloud and Ashton Avenues. Our streets are one of the busiest cut-throughs in the area. There was actually a traffic study done on this. We are thriving. There are kids every day that are playing, walking, biking on our streets. There's actually three bus stops that the school put on our streets. Very busy. There's never been, as far as my knowledge, since I've lived there, a child car accident. Also, I'm a member of the PTA Board for Los Alameda School, and we, of course, call on volunteers in the area. And one of the major things that people say is they cannot come because they cannot find childcare. I hope you support toddle.
Thank you. Uh Lori Perica followed by Amy Robb.
Hello. Uh my name is Lori Perica, and I'm a West Menlo resident. And I also have three children, seven and under. Um I'm in favor of toddle being able to open its doors. The applicants have thoroughly thought through this plan, and they'll ensure the smooth flow of children in and out of the facility. I know that as a parent that would use the facility, I would edbot abide by the traffic circulation agreement that they'll require parents to sign. In fact, two of my children already attend schools in the area, and those schools have also asked us to adhere to some type of policy um and agreement that parents were required to sign. It's common for preschools and elementary schools to have guidelines for arrivals and departures to alleviate the possibility of congestion and provide safeguards for other cars and pedestrians in the air, in the area. My experience is that these guidelines are adhered to and taken seriously. And I strongly urge you to let toddle open its doors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Amy Robb followed by Joanne Jester.
Juggling act, for sure. Hi, I'm Amy Robb, and I'm in support of toddle. When I became a mother, a little over three years ago, I decided to resign from my career in education as a job coach and a counselor to teenagers and adults with disabilities to stay at home and raise my son. Now I have two sons and work part-time from home for Legal, I'm sorry, Legal Shield, a company that provides affordable access to quality law firms. Though I love raising boys, my boys, I occasionally find myself in a pinch and need, I'm in need of quality, flexible childcare led by people that I trust and respect. Being a stay-at-home mom and working part-time is a balancing act. My older son also wants to be around older children, other children, his age, on a regular basis. Having a flexible option like toddle, where I could sign up for childcare according to my schedule, would be invaluable to my family and would allow me to do my best at work and home. Also, the location is ideal because my family lives in Menlo Park, and my husband works at Stanford University. I would follow toddle's traffic circulation plan and emission contract in part because I would be so thankful for their service.
Great, thank you. Joanne Jester followed by Tracy Hogan.
Hi, thank you. I'm Joanne Jester, and I oppose toddle and request to keep our neighborhood residential. However, if toddle is approved, um there are some mitigations that I was hoping that you can consider. Um like several of my neighbors I mentioned, we wanted to decrease in maximum number of children to twelve at a time instead of twenty-four. Um the lot sizes in our neighborhood are about fourteen hundred to sixteen hundred square feet. So if you can imagine twenty-four kids in such a small, small amount of space, it really is way too many kids. Um twelve is a more typical number for a large family daycare, which is common in residential area. Uh we also wanted to consider uh the use permit to be valid for one year. Um the planning commission states that five years typically what's granted. Five years is a really long time, right? Um children graduate from schools uh in that timeframe. People move out of neighborhoods in that timeframe. So um the first year is extremely important for observing and validating toddle's operations and to really see what the impact of the neighborhood actually is. And also to see if toddle will will actually be able to enforce customers to adhere to the traffic patterns and parking guidelines. I do want to mention that due to the drop-off um nature of this daycare, there will be many new customers or customers that only occasionally use toddle, which are, which, and they may be unfamiliar with the policies and the neighborhood. Um next, we want, uh wanted to ask your consideration of converting one of the parking spots on Alameda to a ten-minute um loading and unloading zone, and also installation of a traffic barrier. Uh this would discourage parking and traffic from flowing into Manzanita. Um as you know, once you turn into Manzanita, it is likely to result in cut-through traffic since it's really difficult to caten on Al- 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 Manzanita and also to turn onto a busy Alameda. Lastly, wanted your consideration and including of a noise-reducing fence. The planning commission has suggested planting bushes. However, um I know firsthand, my next-door neighbor has pretty mature bushes and trees right next door, and they have three um, three lovely girls that I hear their conversations perfectly. Lastly, if I can comment on one of the um previous um supporters.
We just need to wrap up. If you just take a second.
Sure, yeah. So I just wanted to mention that there was a child fatality on Barney. It was some time ago, but I've encouraged you to look into records. It did happen. So I I know it was quite a while ago, but it did happen. That was it. Thank you for your consideration.
Uh Sherwin, Tracy, let's see, I might have got myself mixed up here. Uh, Tracy, let's see, I might have got myself mixed up here. Excuse me, Tracy Hogan?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Good afternoon. My name is Tracy Hogan. I'm the mother of young children and I'm very excited to have Toddle as an additional childcare option in the community. Its flexible structure and location make it unusual and very convenient for families in the community. Additionally, its neighborhood location is far preferable to something commercial. When my children are away from our home, I prefer that they spend time in a real, in a real yard, um, with real neighbors to be mindful of, just like they do at home. Thank you for taking the time to hear our opinions.
Thank you. Uh, Sherwin Chen, followed by Kelly Agnich.
Hi, my name is Sherwin Chen. I'm a resident of West Menlo Park, um, here in support of Toddle and I'd like to make two separate points. First, I have two kids, a nine-year-old and a six-year-old, and childcare with flexible options simply does not exist in our neighborhood. Given the size, um, and average of 11 children during the day, I don't see Toddle as a commercial facility. It really strikes me as a personalized neighborhood service that benefits the entire community and I think my wife's a great example of this. Um, we're both big supporters of education, uh, but the lack of flexible childcare has kept her from getting really involved until our youngest entered kindergarten last year. Since then, my wife has served on the leadership committee that got Measure W passed. This was the bond measure from Menlo Park Schools and she agreed to be VP of the, uh, PTO this year. If we had had options like Toddle available, she would have been able to get involved years earlier. Second, I personally live on a busy, safe routes to school street and following traffic circulation rules like not making certain turns out of the Oak Knoll, um, parking lot is very common. I'm sure Toddle's families will be respectful of traffic circulation requests. Parents in our community simply don't violate these. And while I empathize with the neighbors' fears about traffic patterns, I believe these are overblown, especially since my understanding is that Toddle's total impact is estimated to be one car every six minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Agnich, followed by Laura Hale. Is Kelly here? Then we have Laura Hale. Followed by Henry Riggs.
Good afternoon. I'm Laura Hale and I'm here to speak in support of Toddle. I live in Menlo Park and believe Toddle would not only benefit families of young children, but also local businesses whose clients want to shop, exercise, or make office visits without children in tow. As a mother of four, I'm well accustomed to keeping an eye open for children when I drive. I firmly believe Toddle's families will have the same consideration for little ones when they drive to and from Toddle during the week. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Laura, Laura Hale, followed by, uh, Lori, I missed, Henry Riggs.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Uh, Henry Riggs, Menlo Park. I also happen to be the architect for Toddle, although, uh, I'm non-billable today. I also want to mention, uh, just finished up nine and a half years as a planning commissioner in Menlo Park. Um, and, uh, I can tell you that virtually every large project, uh, that we see, including quite a few residences and all daycare centers, uh, end up being disputed at our commission. Change worries people and there's a lot of reason for that. We invest a lot in our neighborhoods and have something that may be reported to be benign, but, uh, others fear is certainly enough to get your attention. Worry and passion also have a way of snowballing. Uh, this is a good thing in many cases because this is how communities come together. But it can be hard to integrate, um, uh, rational studies, uh, highly conservative traffic reports and professional recommendations. Uh, I was going to bring up as an example, a daycare center, notably larger and a full-time one, not drop-off, uh, that, uh, the planning commission approved a little over a year ago on Bay Road near Willow Road. Uh, interestingly enough, Mr. Cornberg, uh, was here today to report just what I was going to report. There was a great deal of concern. I remember one woman in particular was concerned that there would be the constant slamming of doors because after all, that's how it was expected and it would wake her up at 8:30 in the morning. As it turned out, although this project was appealed, uh, I believe there was one resident who was fretting and I, I saw them at an event, "When is this thing going to open?" It had opened several weeks earlier. So I, I hope you support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Anderson, followed by Allison Penner.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Julia Anderson. I'm a mother of two young girls and am in support of Toddle. Neighborhood preschools, including programs located in a converted residence, are not uncommon in San Mateo County. Most have coexisted happily with their neighbors for decades. My daughter attends the Menlo-Atherton Co-op, which is located in a residential neighborhood and next to a public park. Parents at the Co-op have been utilizing the center for years without any safety issues that I know of affecting the many children who come and go from the surrounding homes and playground. I believe the same will be the case with families using Toddle. I know I will certainly take great care when I drive to and from Toddle, as I always do when I'm in the car with my girls or in the car by myself. I've noticed recently that a family that lives close to the proposed location on Alameda de Las Polgas, um, put up a sign saying, "Drive like your kids live here," and I believe in that strongly. Every residential street deserves that respect. Drive like your kids live there. Drive like your mother or father lives there. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Penner, followed by Michelle Eroding.
Good afternoon. My name is Allison Penner and thank you for allowing me to express my support for Toddle. As a parent in Los Lomitas School District, our school has an untraditional schedule that will make Toddle a critical resource for neighborhood families who need more hours of childcare each day for their kindergartners. As a kindergarten teacher and parent, I have read research and attended many seminars that demonstrate the need for children to have access to natural outdoor play setting like that offered at Toddle. Outdoor play spaces with grass, trees, and nature are more beneficial to children's well-being than urban or commercial play areas. I don't believe that Toddle should be located in a commercial space. My daughter attended a neighborhood preschool, our school in Menlo Park, and it's a well-respected preschool. And I could say from personal experience that all the parents were very respectful, just being so grateful to be in a neighborhood setting preschool. And now that our school is an established preschool, it is a draw for young families to move into that area, into that neighborhood. Finally, I'd like to mention that Heather and Amy are respected members of our Menlo Park community. They care deeply about others and making positive changes in the community. Through their work with My New Red Shoes and other local nonprofits, Heather and Amy have demonstrated their dedication to others. They strive to do the right thing and have the experience, wisdom, and integrity to run a successful business. Heather and Amy will make it a priority to respect the neighbors of Toddle. Thank you for your time and I strongly encourage you to approve Toddle for the benefit of our community.
Thank you. Michelle Eroding. And I, our next speaker would be Tamara Russell.
Good afternoon and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I would like to speak today in favor of Toddle. I'm a Menlo Park resident for 15 years and a working executive mother for 13 of those years. Uh, for years, my children attended the Robert School. It's a residential-based, very quiet neighborhood that serves 50 children. During that time at the Robert School, there didn't seem to be any problem with parking. There was no onsite parking at the school and there were no traffic issues that I was aware of. It's so rare to have flexible childcare during my time with young children. My children are now too old to take advantage of this. I would have had to go to San Mateo for drop-in care or drive two and a half hours one-way, taking, loading my children in the car at 6:00 AM, driving to Fremont where my parents lived, to be in Santa Clara for eight o'clock meetings. That is so hard to do as a working mother and I hope you'll see that by freeing the talent of women who work in Menlo Park or who live and volunteer, how much this can mean to the men and women in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tamara Russell?
Good afternoon. My name is Tamara Russell. I'm here to strongly support Toddle. I'm a mother of two young children, like many others, and, um, in a bit of delightful irony, my two children are, um, entertaining themselves in the hallway right now, like many others. I do not have full-time childcare at home, nor extended family nearby, as you can tell from the accent. There are no flexible drop-off childcare or preschools like Toddle in the area, which is actually what would be really helpful. Local, drop-off, and flexible. I do not personally need regular full-time childcare or a nanny. Instead, I need a safe and enriching place I can leave my kids for a few hours while I deal with numerous school, volunteer, community, and personal commitments, which change from week to week. The neighborhood location is extremely convenient, allowing me to drop my kids quickly and head off to maximize the time getting things done. I definitely believe that Toddle would fulfill a childcare gap in the community and would address a need many parents have. Not only would it be highly useful, it is a local, family-friendly business, which surely would enhance the, the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've gone through all the speaker cards. Is there anyone who, uh, wanted to speak who hasn't had a chance to speak yet? Okay. Well, seeing none, thank you, uh, all for your, um, for your input. We'll now come back to the, the board for discussion and, uh, you know, perhaps we could see if any, if any questions, follow-up questions for Mr. Monowitz. I, I did have one, if I may. You know, one of the major concerns, of course, is the traffic on, potential traffic on Manzanita and the, you know, the applicant has agreed to certain mitigations, um, to, to prevent, try to prevent that. But, uh, if it, if it turned out that there were, were cars on Manzanita, that some of these mitigations were not followed, can you just walk us through a little bit how the enforcement process works? Uh, both, someone might call and say, um, "I think there's a problem." Uh, that's one instant. And then I, and at the end of the year, you have some kind of annual review. So maybe you're just going to just give us some more detail on how you would deal with those?
I'd be happy to. Um, with respect to complaints or concerns expressed by nearby neighbors, um, we would respond to those complaints typically within 48 hours to actually send a code compliance officer or a planner out there to observe the situation. We would, um, if necessary, um, have somebody, uh, observe that daily operations to evaluate whether or not compliance with the conditions were being met. And if they were not, we would have a conversation with the business owner and, um, discuss the steps that would be necessary to correct the problem. If the, um, violation of the condition persisted, we would have the ability to issue citations for non-compliance with the permit conditions. Absent a complaint from the neighbors that we needed to investigate, we would conduct annual administrative reviews of the operation of the center. We would evaluate whether or not, um, any complaints had been received and, um, review their scheduling records, um, and do an overall assessment of condition compliance and once again work with the applicant, the, uh, business owner to correct any problems that we identified.
Okay. Thank you for that, uh, description. Mr. Horst?
President, I have two questions. Uh, Mr. Monowitz, uh, one is, what would stop us from, you know, the parking outside Alameda creating a whole, it's actually essentially about three spaces, making that all, um, a drop-off, um, or a passenger loading zone? Why could we not do that?
Uh, that would be a discussion I'd have to have with the Public Works Department, but, um, I-
Essentially, they could do it. We could do it. That could be something that we could do.
Um, I believe so, but once again, I'd want to check with-
I understand. I understand. Uh, the other thing is, uh, do we ever have use permits for a one-year period of time? Have you ever done that?
Yes, I can think of a recent example, um, regarding, uh, commercial recreation activities, uh, being conducted on agricultural land.
Okay. Um, with your annual review, suppose we did do a use permit for the five years and the annual review, at the end of a year, if you found that the conditions that you've imposed on this project really don't meet, you know, the, the spirit, the, I guess, don't, don't meet the, those, those conditions, essentially that there is a lot of cut-through traffic. People do, do go down Manzanita. They do use Barney Street and there are a lot of kids walking around. It is a bikeable pedestrian. I mean, I've been down there and I've seen all the kids from Los Lomitas. It's kind of, um, it's, you know, it's really nice to see all these kids with their parents walking right down the center of the street. So is it, would that be possible to revoke the use permit?
We do have provisions for the planning commission to revoke a use permit. Um, it's a very high standard in terms of demonstrating that the use is having a demonstrable negative impact on the neighborhood, but that process does exist.
One other question, 20 trips per hour, does that mean 20 separate cars per hour? Or is that, or do we count, you know, one comes in and one goes out? That's number, that's two?
I'd like to refer that question to the, uh, traffic study consultant, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Why don't you come up to the podium, please?
It, it would be 10 vehicles. Um, so each trip basically counts as two. One for the pickup and, and then, you know, the arrival and one for the departure.
Okay. So the 20-
It's 10 vehicles.
Is that sort of a peak number or is that an average number?
That would be a peak number.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions?
Supervisors?
I just have a, a couple of comments. Um, you know, obviously we need these childcare spaces in our communities, but this is new and it is different. It's flexible. There's people coming and going at different times. It's not some in the morning and then leaving in the evening. Because it's so new, is it possible, I know we talked about a one-year review, but if we were to approve this, would it be possible, I'm kind of looking at a couple of things. One, to do a six-month review just to see if this really, how well they're doing. I'd rather nip something in the bud early than to wait a year if there is something that's, that's not quite clicking, if you will. Um, and, and there was a concern that five years is a long time. I agree with that, but I also think once you make an investment in something, one year, I believe is too short. And one of the suggestions I would make, because I actually do think this is a great project, you know, I live very close to Performing Arts Center and they drop lots of kids off during the day that come down my block. The interesting thing about parents is I find they're actually very respectful because they do have children in the car and they are dropping children off. So I, I, I think there's always going to be the exception to the rule, but I think this lends itself to, uh, a real need that we have. But one thought I had is maybe do a three-year permit with two one-year additional renewals should they have met all the conditions, um, or in compliance, just so the period isn't so long that, you know, on the review side and also the, the term. It's just a suggestion I have if, uh, if we chose to support this.
And one suggestion I would have is that we actually, um, explore the possibility of having all of the parking on Alameda as a loading, loading zone. I, I think backing out of the driveways not without some risk. So I would prefer to see most of the parking on Alameda.
Yeah, on that question, maybe, I'm not sure who would best address it. Maybe you could give us some perspective on that. I mean, a lot of time and energy was invested in creating this, you know, wanting to have the three spots on Manzanita. And the, you know, the, the whole plan, the whole, the, the whole report that we've read, you know, emphasizes that with rare exception, will anyone ever park on Alameda? And so it's really, it's really set up for Manzanita. So could someone explain kind of how that came to be versus, you know, going with the Alameda de Las Polgas, uh, solution?
Uh, for the purposes of our study, um, we really looked at Manzanita mostly as a worst-case scenario. Uh, from a traffic perspective, there'd be a lot less effect on the community if vehicles do park on Alameda de Las Polgas. You just kind of pull in, pull out, uh, much less effect. So we were really trying to look at a worst case, you know, what if Manzanita was really the prime location? Um, but from a circulation standpoint, uh, there'd be no downside to, to encouraging use of, of Alameda de Las Polgas.
Well, maybe, maybe the applicant could speak, because I, I was under the impression that there's a desire of the applicant that people use Manzanita. Now I'm starting to hear that, that you want, that you're thinking lots of people are going to park on, on Alameda? That, that, uh, I didn't come away with that. That, I didn't come away with that view. I mean, where do you, yeah, what's your expectation for where people are going to park, you know, if it were, you know, approved as is?
So, supervisors, I can speak to the layout. The idea of having three, or actually four, if you include the handicap space, perpendicular pull-in spots, is that it avoids the U-turn issue, particularly with the volume in any five-minute zone here. I wouldn't be surprised if we had more than two spaces ever used.
On Alameda, or...
No, no, on Manzanita.
Do you think people will park on Alameda?
I certainly think that's an availability. I mean, if your intention is to continue northbound on Alameda, you'd pull over and you'd do what we do, which is get out of the car, walk around to the curbside. Kevin comes out on the curbside, because that's where he went in, and you take him into school, and that's not any different than any other street, really. But if you pull in to the driveway, you can then go back out to Alameda because you really wanted to go south, and you're going to Stanford or going to 280. So, actually, there's, maybe flexible is the watchword of this project. You have the choice of parking on Alameda and continuing north, or pulling into Manzanita, but going into a driveway, not taking up street space, blocking anything. And then, since you back out of a driveway, there's no advantage to going down Barney, you would go back to Alameda.
Our understanding from the Planning Department was that onsite parking was most important, and so, that's what we conveyed in our application. And just in terms of the length of permit, if I might, we're making a significant investment and have already made a significant investment that will take four or five years for us to recoup, just for background.
So, just to clarify, so, from your point of view, you don't have, you know, a strong preference as to whether people park on Alameda or Manzanita? In other words, if there was less availability to park on Manzanita, by definition, they'd have to park on Alameda, and that would work, from your point of view?
Yeah, Public Works just didn't want us to count on-street parking in any...
Oh, that's right.
...calculation. And also, our understanding is that allotting those spaces to our center would be another lengthy process, that basically, all the neighbors have to weigh in and say that's okay. And I think Public Works may be on their way to speak to that, but since we have onsite parking, that's usually what's preferred.
If I may make a comment, I hear where Dawn's going, but one of the thoughts is, we already have the availability of Alameda, and then if you take public parking away, I mean, I think this just adds actually extra parking, because everybody has the right to park on a public street. So, I would do just the opposite. I would keep the spots that are there, and people have the ability to park on Alameda already, so anybody that found that to be more convenient, and I think there probably will be, depending on what direction they're going, I think that's sort of like icing on the cake without eliminating some spots for the general public. So, I would just, I mean, that's just, as I look at it, you really already have that, if you will. So, so...
Did you have another comment?
No, not at the moment.
Other comments or questions?
I'd like to ask, I'd like to continue to get to the bottom of this outdoor space issue. We heard from one of the speakers, and I think she was not quoting the state, but was quoting a book, a book of childcare guidelines and regulations that did not exactly compute with what we heard earlier about the size of the space and the amount of children that could play in that. So, I wonder if Ms. Hopkins could answer that for me, please? Because I think kids being outside is very important.
So, the state requires 75 square feet of outdoor space per child, but because, particularly in the Bay Area, that's very difficult to find, the licensing office in San Bruno regularly grants permits or licenses for child cares that have half of that space. So, it's a, the Bright Angel Montessori Center on Bay Road actually got that exemption. And we've gotten verbal approval, or that's still being done, and then that would be considered in this case. If for some reason it wasn't possible, we wouldn't get our license and we wouldn't operate. So, it's not something that I think you need to worry about too much. In terms of outdoor space, you know, we would like the opportunity to let our children outdoors when they needed to go outdoors. We were responding to the neighbors' concerns in wanting to limit that outdoor time, and so that was one of the concessions that we made. We believe that children should be able to play outside when they need to, but because this is a situation where children are not going to be there for eight hours as they would in a normal daycare situation, it's not as important that you have a, you know, two-hour outdoor playtime.
I understand that, but I was going to supervise Tissia with her suggestion that we do a three-year with a couple of years, because I like to have the noise added to that review if we chose to go in that direction, because I think children should be outside when they can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things. Somebody mentioned the word base earlier, I don't recall who it was, and I wanted to follow up on that with Mr. Monowitz, perhaps. I heard what you said about the enforcement and the monitoring and all the steps that you plan to take, but I guess I still have concern about the monitoring and the enforcement part of all that. And is there anything else that you haven't said that might be done? Or did you, is that the extent of the list, is what you said earlier? Just that experience causes me some concern about the monitoring part of all this.
I don't have anything to add in terms of our monitoring and enforcement provisions, but I do have some thoughts on the distinction of this facility versus an operation such as base.
Could you just, a couple items?
Well, I think one of, some of the concerns related to the catering operation has to do with the time of the operation and the odors generated by that operation. In this case, the facility will be opened from 8:00 to 6:00, so we have clear operating hours that shouldn't disrupt the neighborhood at inappropriate times. The facility will only be serving prepackaged, pre-prepared foods to their children for snacks, so there will be no cooking going on, nor will there be deliveries, any sense of, at the scale that base requires to run their operation.
Thank you. And just one other thing, it's a little off-topic perhaps, but maybe not. Someone said that there was a gap of 4,000 childcare facilities in the county, and I'm wondering, first of all, how long has this facility been in process? And then, perhaps, you could just answer that question first, and then I can go on to the next part.
Supervisor Slocum, it's 4,000 slots.
Slots? Okay, thank you.
We received the application for this use permit on May 15th in 2013.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. You know, I am in favor of the proposed Toddl Child Care Center. And to my eyes, you know, I believe the impacts are not substantial. I think they will prove to be minimal. I mean, the average occupancy is 11. It's only one hour in the day when there's 24. I think it's actually fortuitous that it's at the corner of a street. You know, if it's in the middle of Manzanita, it'd be a very, very different situation. You know, there's a lot, there's ample parking, because we got the three spots, not counting the handicap spot, plus Alameda, you know, plus the spaces in the garage for the staff. And the traffic study, you know, is conservative. So, you know, I'm hopeful, and I'm frankly confident, that the impacts will be minimal. The mitigations here are very significant. I mean, the applicant really has stepped up to make a lot of promises that I don't think are really probably typical, to require that there only be, you know, two drop-offs and pickups every 12 minutes. That's a pretty big, that's a big commitment. Again, they require that people sign contracts to really cut down on the outdoor playtime. And these are pretty substantial commitments by the applicant. So, when you, when I look at, even if they weren't there, anyway, the combination of these, this minimal impact, plus these commitments, I think is what lends me to support it. I also have heard from many, and you can just see by reading on the internet, that the owners are very sophisticated, very well-respected. I think they have an incredible incentive to do the right thing here. I think we will hear about it if this is approved, and there are occasions where these standards aren't met, we will certainly hear about it, and I think the applicant will be very incented to make sure that that stops. And then, finally, this need for daycare and childcare is just so critical in our community. So, for all those reasons, I do support it. There's been, there's a number, I've identified three or four issues here which we'll have to kind of bring to ground, assuming it, you know, the kind of, you know, smaller points, like, should we have a six-month administrative review instead of a 12-month? Should the permit be three years instead of five years? Should they redo something with the Alameda parking? And there's actually one more I'd like to add to this list, is a fourth thing for us to consider, which is, you know, the requirement that the applicant allow only two people to arrive and drop off every 12 minutes. I do think that it really should say that the applicant will make sure that no more than two are scheduled every 12 minutes, because it's going to lead to really strange behavior if it says allow. So, for example, if you're supposed to be there before 6, but you get there at 6:01, that's going to impinge on that 12-minute segment. So, what do you do? Or if your child's sick and you need to come to the facility, or if the 12-minute segment following yours already has two people, I mean, you may be incenting these people to drive around Manzanita. So, I would like to just kind of add to the list of things for the board to consider whether that language should say "schedule," because, and what I would do also, just to kind of put a caveat on that, there are two requirements in the mitigation measure. There's, right now, it says, "allow no more than two per 12 minutes," and "allow no more than 20, oh, 10, per 60." So, leave the allow there for the 60. So, you know, I think that's okay. But, you know, if there's three in one 12-minute and one in the next 12-minute, but, you know, no more than 10, no more than 10 allowed in the hour. But I just, this 12 minutes, it seems so finely tuned to me that I think we're going to create more trouble with it. So, I'll just add that to the list for consideration, should the board, should we get that far?
I just had one comment. I want to make sure I'm a little clearer on what I was asking on the six-month review. I was talking about that for the first year, just do a six-month review, then do the next six months. After that, it would be yearly, and the purpose for that was really to get a good snapshot after six months and just make sure if we need to do anything or, you know, give some feedback. We do it in a shorter period of time. So, I guess if there are no other...
I was just going to make a couple of comments before, if I may. I think the key, for me, the key here is flexibility. And flexibility, because it's, we change the way we live. We have part-time work, we have people who work at home, we have single parents, we have moms and dads who travel. Sometimes they're not home, sometimes they are home. We have children who are different ages, children who go to different schools, and so, one of the parents has to go someplace else to get one child. And so, it seems to me that this meets a lot of needs, and we need flexibility because we've become a different kind of world than we were even 15, 10, 15 years ago. For a long time, I was on the board of a flexible childcare center in Burlingame called Pal Care, and it was flexible in that it was 6:00 in the morning till 11:00 at night. Actually, when it opened, it was at one time 24 hours. And there were Saturday hours, and there were partial Sunday hours. And the childcare center fronted on a busy street, but it backed up to a neighborhood, and it was covered by, and so, you could hear, if you lived in that neighborhood, you could hear the children playing. And I think in the beginning, people thought there was going to be a lot of traffic troubles, and there was going to be a lot of noise trouble, and none of those really materialized. And those people in the community who worked odd hours, evening hours, long shifts, were very pleased to have that. And so, and it just did not create the kind of difficulty that was expected. And so, I think with some patience and with some of the changes that we're suggesting, and with periodic reviews, especially the first review of six months, I think that if we work together, and I think that the Toddl folks are very willing to work with the neighborhood, and I think if we try to figure this out together, we could have a really important childcare facility for people who need flexibility in their scheduling. So, I hope that we can figure out how to present this and review it and kind of move forward.
Just one short comment, President Pine, is that maybe we don't turn the whole Alameda into a loading zone, but I would like to at least have one. And my reasoning is that the more cars that we can take off of Manzanita, I think the more potential for success. And if all the people going north can park on Alameda in that one loading zone, I think that we are much better off, as opposed to encouraging them to be on Manzanita. So, and I know that's an issue with, we have to deal with the DPW, but I think we should pursue that, at least for one parking place. Now, the other thing is that, I mean, I drive in that area all the time. I go up to Ludikens all the time, who's a good friend of mine. But in any case, there's always parking available, actually. The reality is there. But I just think by having a loading zone there, you encourage people who are going northbound to actually utilize that part of the facility, or that part of the parking.
So, maybe a question on that. So, if I understand, that requires, I guess, a separate type of review process, or we couldn't just order, we couldn't just make that happen by a vote today to have a space set aside on Alameda, or could we?
There's an entire neighborhood review process, and, you know, we would have to kind of look at our regular process and work with DPW, and it would take a little bit of time to study that and notify the neighbors and move forward. But certainly, if that's the board's, you know, desire and will, that could happen.
Yeah, it's a process that's handled by Public Works, and it requires notification of all of the neighbors, and then consideration by your board of any comments from the neighbors before you can make any changes on the street parking, whether it's a no-parking zone, whether it's a loading zone.
I guess my suggestion would be that, again, if it's the will of the board, that we not make this application contingent on that, but that we, again, if we do approve it concurrently, ask that that be, that process be started. I certainly would support it if it came back. I think the neighborhood would probably support it.
Agreed.
So, I think we've addressed that issue. There was a suggestion of a six-month administrative review, which I think, it sounds like there's concurrence on. And Mr. Monowitz, will six months give you enough time to take kind of a good sense for what's happening? I assume it will.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. There were two other issues that have been flagged so far, which is, one is the length of the use permit. I would speak in favor of five, is that that's our standard process, and there are enforcement mechanisms in place through normal zoning compliance and through the annual administrative review. And it's extraordinarily rare that we don't do a five-year. And again, I think in light of the mitigations that are in place, that I, my personal view is that we should stay with the five years, but I, there may be, others may have different perspectives.
I'm fine with that. I threw out three. If we're going to do the six-month review, I think we're going to have a sense of how they're doing, and then do another after the second six months. I think we're going to have a sense of it. And obviously, like, we do have the ability to revoke things if we choose, but if it, I don't want it to be a financial hardship either, because you start up a business, and if they're concerned in three years and they need four years in order to make it financially viable, I don't want to turn them upside down either. So, I'm okay with the five years. It was just some comments that were made that I responded to, so...
Okay. And then, the last issue, and there may be more, but the last, I wrote it down, was the suggestion to make the small change in the, make the change in the mitigation measure to say that, you know, the applicant will make sure that no more than two drop-offs and pickups are scheduled, as opposed to the word "allowed," where I think it will lead to unintended consequences. It's kind of a subtle point, but I would make that recommendation.
So, with that, I'm happy to make the motion to approve or deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Planning Commission with those conditions that we just mentioned, which was a six-month administrative... which was a six-month administrative review in the first year. And obviously, six at the end. It would stay at five years. We would allow things to be scheduled to every 12 minutes. And then the Alameda would be separate. We asked that it be looked at, but it won't be, it won't affect the approval today. But it is something we'd like to look at.
There was, if I just jump in, there was one other comment that staff, planning staff, Mr. Monowitz had made in the beginning. And that was a suggestion to amend condition number four. And I think the idea was that the state was going to need to make sure that everything was in place before they granted the license. As I recall, Steve, you were suggesting an amendment to condition number four that stated that prior to the opening of the business,
That is correct.
they shall secure a license.
Yeah, and provide a copy to the planning department.
And I'm happy to add that. So that's my motion.
I'll second that motion. So the motion made and seconded, I won't repeat it. I think it's in the record. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or opposition? Okay, so that's approved unanimously. Just a couple of closing comments and others may have some as well. You know, I just find these land use issues to be really amongst the hardest that we deal with on the Board of Supervisors because, you know, they're, you know, people come with very different perspectives and it's hard to sort of these things out. I always try to put myself in the shoes of the neighbors. And I fully understand how, you know, I understand, these are just very difficult. And the second thing I'd like to suggest, too, on a broader point. This application process, by my count, took 14 months from the date that the application arrived here. And I do think, given the great need for childcare in the county, that, you know, it would be well-served if planning could go take a look at, you know, possibly, you know, what steps, if any, could be taken to streamline the process for childcare facilities. And I know, for example, like the city of Dublin has done a lot with zoning codes and regulations. I mean, the extreme case is the so-called, I guess, what's it called, permit of right, where there's never, there's never really a discretionary approach. It's probably not really possible. But, you know, maybe there's some middle ground or at the minimum, maybe there's some timelines or some guidance. Because we need the childcare and if, sometimes the process, the proposal will make sense, sometimes it won't. But we need to get through it, I think, more expeditiously and try to lead people in the right direction right from the start. So if I could make that request for?
I'd be happy to look into that and report back to the board.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments?
Mr. President, I would too, was concerned about the length of time. And 14 months seems like a long period of time to go through. And I know some things are more complex than others, but I would ask Steve that you take a look at that also. And I don't know if it's a candidate for the lean academy or process reengineering, but I think that's important, given that gap in slots. And then also, I'd like to just, we received a lot of email on this matter. Here are some copies. I probably shouldn't show that because of the number of trees that were cut down. But I think that the public engagement on both sides was extraordinary. And just would thank everybody for taking the time to communicate and to try to educate at least this supervisor on the issues. It's just very much appreciated and taking your time to come here and present the PowerPoint is just a good example of community engagement, I think. And I feel like we've all read this material. We all studied it. We all gave it a lot of thought and consideration. And we all asked a lot of questions of various department heads and lawyers, et cetera, et cetera. And I just thought the process was solid from that perspective. So thank you, everybody.
All right, without, seeing no further comments, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending.